6:06 PM, we have a meeting. I do recommend that we reconvene at Board. We'll make sure you're heard. And those of you online, when public comment comes, we ask that you please raise your hand. Counsel, with that, if we're ready, we'll go ahead and get started. City manager?
Yes, sir.
We good?
Yes, sir.
City attorney? Okay. Good evening, everyone. It is 16:00 PM. We are here at the City Hall Council Chamber's 100 Polk Avenue in the beautiful city of Cape Canaveral, Florida for our regular city council meeting. I call this meeting to order. Mayor Pro Tim Kellum, would you please lead us in the pledge?
Let's go lead the Super Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. City clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Davis?
Here.
Councilmember Jackson?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Kellum?
Here.
Mayor Morrison?
Here.
Councilmember Willis?
Here.
Thank you for all being here, counsel, public, city staff, and those of you who are listening online. We appreciate you taking the time to be here and apologize for the delayed start. We had our CRA board meeting that went a little long. And with that, we are at the point of the agenda for the approval of Agenda as Written or with amendments. Counsel, are there any changes to the order or comments on the Agenda as Written?
Make a motion to approve the Agenda as Written.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Willis, second by Councilmember Davis, to approve the Agenda as Written. Discussion on the item, my comments would be simple but very serious, is the item that was placed as informational item number 11, update to the January 24, 2024 Special City Council Meeting. My hope, and I believe that the council's request, that this be a discussion item. And in the last meeting, I believe we moved this out of information into discussion. I do not intend to do that tonight. I do have some comments at reports. And I will keep them as brief as I can. But I do want to express that my intention was to discuss this at every meeting until these items are resolved. And I want to say that to the council, to the public, and on the record, that I hope to see this as an item for discussion. And certainly, if this council desires and wants to speak about it, I'm willing. But that's the only comments I have for the changes to the agenda. And if there are any other comments, we can go ahead and call the roll.
Is it going to be a long? You said you want to add topics, or you want to discuss it? You're not talking a long time for your item, for number 11?
I don't intend to. I have brief comments, and I will be as concise as I can be. But...
Will we be able to get an update on the status of the project with being in the informational section?
No, from my understanding, informational items are intentionally there to not be discussed.
That's a yes.
So it is, as a council, to add on agenda items, right? By consensus, last time, we discussed it, or one of the times, I don't know if it was the exact last time, we moved it from information as a discussion item. So that's the process to follow.
I'd like to move it into discussion, then.
Okay, so...
I'll second. Mayor, was that your intention?
So the discussion, or the item that we're on now, is a privilege, Agenda as Written or with amendments. We have a motion by Councilmember Willis, a second by Councilmember Davis.
No. It was by, I think...
Oh, I'm sorry.
The original.
Oh.
That's the motion on the floor right now. The discussion that's ensued, this was really the only opportunity I felt that I had to express that here with the council. And so we've now come to, I guess, the proposed... Councilmember Jackson would like to add that on?
Yes, please.
Okay, so I think we would probably need to vote, either amend the motion or vote against this and make a new motion, because we're approving it as written. So you can, we can, city attorney, I believe, amend the main motion to to add this on, and any other comments you can make on this action, if there's any procedural issues altogether.
Just to move item 11 to discussion?
Yes.
I don't recall the main motion that was made, but if the main motion did include adding that as a discussion, you can make a motion to modify or amend the main motion to add that as a discussion. That basically modifies the Agenda as presented.
Can I just withdraw the motion?
Like, since unanimous consent, you can withdraw the motion, it can be withdrawn, and a new motion can be made. If the full Councilmember Jackson, you should vote the original motion up for that.
By voter, all in favor? Can I take...
If you just look around, if it's unanimous consent of the council just to withdraw that motion that was made and seconded, then the councils will...
I'll withdraw the motion if I didn't give you ample time to.
That's a... It came in fast, but we dealt with it as...
I'll withdraw the motion.
Anyone opposed withdrawing the motion? Do we have unanimous consent? Thank you for that. I like that. So we're at the approval of Agenda as Written or with amendments. I think we've heard an amendment, looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to move item 11 into the discussion.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Jackson, second by Mayor Pro Tim Kellum, to move Agenda item number 11 into the discussion. My comment would be item, it would become item number 10. Is that what you intended? Is okay with you, because I think you have two items, and Councilmember Davis has an item as well. I'm certainly not saying to go ahead of those. But item number 10, is that... City clerk, are you clear? Any further discussion? Let's call the roll.
Councilmember Davis?
Against.
Councilmember Jackson?
Or.
Mayor Pro Tim Kellum?
Or.
Mayor Morrison?
Or.
Councilmember Willis?
Or.
Motion passes four to one, and that concludes that section of the agenda. We are now on to the presentation and interviews portion of the meeting. And we have one tonight, which is to interview the applicant for the appointment to the Board of Adjustment. Do we have Mr. Arvo Ilau here? How are you doing? Come on forward if you don't mind, please. And our city attorney is just going to ask you a few questions, and we'll get started. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Of all the information in your application, is true correct to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Explain to the council why you would like to serve on this board. I've been a resident of Cape Canaveral for about 20 years now. I was of September this year. I served on the Board of Adjustment about 10, 12 years ago. And at that time, two terms as a board member, two terms as chairman of the Board of Adjustment. After I term limited out, I kind of walked away from city service. And I decided, after talking to Todd recently, that you're looking for someone, and I'm glad to volunteer some help again.
That's good. Thank you.
That's my question.
Okay, well, thank you again for being here. And counsel?
I don't have any questions, but I say welcome back and thank you for your service.
I appreciate your willingness to step into it again, and thank you very much.
Yes, thank you so much for being willing to participate. I did have some questions, though, on your background, because I like engineering. What type of engineer were you?
A degree in theoretical mechanics and materials, which is basically a mechanical engineering degree.
Okay, excellent. And you are an executive manager in manufacturing?
Yes.
Very interesting. What type of manufacturing?
We built power plants my whole career. So Cape Canaveral Power Plant is one that my company, Siemens, had built at the time, and many more around the world.
So you're very good at infrastructure. We like that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Kellum?
I don't have any questions. Thank you, and thank you for stepping up, and we'll welcome you on the board again.
Yes, echo the council. Thank you very much. Some tough decisions. They don't come often. But when they do, really important for our community. So thank you for your prior service and willingness to do it again. If you have any questions for us, I've never just done this before.
I actually liked the room better than the library when I was doing it.
Thank you again, sir. We appreciate your willingness to serve.
Thank you.
And we will take this up as a resolution here, pretty early in the agenda. Okay, well, now we can go ahead and move on to the public participation portion of the meeting. And we've got a couple of comment cards here. And for those of you listening at home, we ask that you please raise your hand, and we will make sure you're heard after those folks here have had a chance to speak. The first card I have here is Mr. John Benton. John, if you're here, please come forward.
All right, I'm here for my code reduction hearing. I'd like to point out to the citizens, I've been in the 50 of these meetings, and it's been 10 years next month. You've got to let somebody defend themselves when someone accuses somebody of living in a warehouse. You don't just take his word because he's a deacon in the church up here at the Presbyterian Church. My goodness, he was a pedophile groomer, man. His son's a sex offender. He was using the warehouses next door on the sex offender site that he lived in there. Why did you give him a ticket? Why did you get him in there for that? He had all the homeless people in his unit. So he only had one person in mind, and that was a cop. And you wouldn't let me defend myself. This lawyer over here, his lawyer wouldn't even let me defend myself, referred to me as a cookie that crumbled. I didn't show them any respect. People that have heard that recording, cops, lawyers, doctors, said, my comments was first. Your witness testified after me. I'm supposed to be able to ask him questions? I wasn't allowed to, because he's a deacon in the church. You put your religion before what's good for this country. Look what religion is doing to our country. It's dividing it. Look what the Jews over there in Israel are doing, killing those Palestinians. They're calling Hamas terrorists. Those are people living in a prison over there, open air prison. They escaped and went and killed their Jews' kids. Those kids are going to grow up and be killing them later. Why not do it? We're as guilty as Israel.
John, can you please stay focused on city business?
I'm staying focused.
Thank you.
This Jew over here, he beat me, man.
Hey, that's enough. That's enough. You're not going to be boisterous and slander those things. If you'd like to conclude, we've heard enough. Thank you. Okay. Mr. Pat Campbell?
Patrick Campbell, 307 Surf Drive. I don't think anybody ever told you it was going to be easy setting up there. Okay, I'm sorry for what you have to put up with. I've got a couple of things, just for general comment. I've been trying to, I spent a lot of time at BSNA, if you didn't know that. But I've been trying to find the resolution or the disposition of 30 parcels that developer Michael DeChristopher filed code complaints against. I can't find any of them at BSNA. I don't know if I'm not looking for it correctly, or they're not in there. But I can't, I can't find what was done with them. I'm just interested in the disposition. Did the city find it to have merit? Or did they just decide that it had no merit? And how do you close these? How do you get them off of your plate? The, I spent a lot of money on that BSNA system, so for me, it's better than not having it. But it certainly is not meeting the promises that came with that $300,000 purchase yet. I'm still seeing duplicate parcel numbers in there that I pointed out a couple of years ago that haven't been cleaned up. I'm hoping the city's going to use it to its fullest. And I hope there's a plan to get it operational where it is a benefit to all of you, not just the citizens. But certainly, I have some expectations of it that aren't being met yet. I think it is a good system. It's used by lots of municipalities. So I think it has the capability. It's just not there for us yet. Todd, I told you I was going to keep coming back on this. It's coming up on hurricane season. It's probably too late for this time. But I was hoping we could get, as a city, put a Amnesty Day for household chemicals and electronics. I see many counties and cities in Florida that are using the next few months to do that, where they set up satellite sites in your municipality, where you can bring the junk out of your garage, get rid of your old electronics, and have it recycled properly, rather than depend on somebody to haul it over to Brevard County. And I'm sure you all know, sometimes that doesn't happen. Sometimes it ends up in a dumpster. Sometimes it ends up in our drains. The more we could do to provide a better way for citizens, and better way is what's easy. People will do what's easy. So, you know, take the cue from other cities and counties in Florida that are doing this Amnesty Day program once a year. I think it would be a benefit all the way around. So that was it. That was all I want to talk about. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, those are the only two comment cards that I have. Thank you for your time. I have check online. See if there's participating virtually. Anyone has their hand raised? Please, Ash, please raise your hand online if you intend to speak. I will unmute you and give you a chance to speak. Going up and down, I see no hands raised. And with that, we'll go ahead and close public participation, bring it back to the council for the consent agenda. We have four items. Counsel, if there's any items we would like to pull from the consent agenda, no vote needed, just let me know which ones we want to pull. And otherwise, we'll vote through the balance, the remaining. Just take a second here. I would like to pull item number four, please. And that's it for me.
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda number one, two, and three.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Kellum, second by Councilmember Willis, to approve consent agenda items one, two, and three. Any further discussion, counsel? Seeing none, city clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
Or.
Councilmember Jackson?
Or.
Mayor Pro Tim Kellum?
Or.
Mayor Morrison?
Or.
Councilmember Willis?
Or.
Right. Items one, two, and three pass 5-0. Item number four, the item I pulled, which is Resolution 2024-03, Appointing a Board of Adjustment to the City of Cape Canaveral, Providing for the Repeal of Prior Inconsistent Resolution Severability in an Effective Date. This is the gentleman we just interviewed. And my comments are, is this the the size of that board and the vacancies? Can we have a refresher on how many serve on the Board of Adjustment? Is it a 3, 5, 7? Whoever I think, city manager can help answer that question, that size of that board?
Dave is indicating there are seven members on that. Dave, do you know how many are currently on that board?
According to the paper that Councilmember Willis gave out last, I don't know if it was last meeting or before, there are 24 serving on it and three vacancies.
That is correct. That's my understanding as well.
Thank you very much. So this would make the fifth out of seven? Okay, and we recently were, provided the opportunity to appoint a board member to the Culture and Leisure Services Board. Since then, I think we've seen some changes, and I think some more applicants who've shown interest, which is fantastic. I don't think we've had any other board appointments since then. I want to make sure that we are following a process that's similar, because we're in the same circumstance with one member. This board is important. I know that we might need to work on our code and procedures. But it sounds like with three vacancies, he's going to fill one of the three.
Yes, sir.
And we are, did we follow similar or the same process for that board as we had for the Culture and Leisure Services Board recently? And the goal is to get more applicants. Obviously, in this circumstance, would be very beneficial with three vacancies. And so I don't want to make an appointment, excuse me, to the Board of Adjustment without using the same principles as Culture and Leisure Services.
I think maybe the question might be phrased, did the city procedures change at all for this board or that board? And my answer to that would be, no, we've not done anything differently. Mia, we haven't advertised any specific board over another board, for example.
We've advertised quite a bit on our board.
But for all of our boards?
Yeah.
Equally? And no other procedural change has taken place to try to recruit or attract board members?
Other than by word of mouth, maybe?
Yeah, there may have been increased word of mouth, but that's not just city staff.
There's a vacant, there's one vacancy on the Culture and Leisure Services Board?
Two vacancies.
Molly, or John, you want to speak to that? They're indicating...
There's two. And how many applicants roughly do we have right now?
Nine applicants for two vacancies.
Nine applicants. And so they pick first priority, second, and third. And so we've got nine interested people to serve on boards. If any of those chose second, it's, I know that we don't have the benefit to wait. And maybe, you know, we have to take action on appointing board members. But if there's any desire to improve this, I hope we can figure out a way to possibly, as we were talking, our city manager interviewing a batch at a time and making kind of a wave of appointments to fill, so that we can consider all. Because I haven't taken a look at the applications or seen them, but if some of them are interested in the Board of Adjustment, we're sort of in a, just a fairness.
Mayor, if I could ask Molly or John to come up and speak to the question of, are those nine applicants only interested in the Culture and Leisure Services Board? Or are they interested in all boards or multiple boards?
Without having all of the applications in front of me right now, I would say that the majority of them only selected CLS, but there's a couple that have selected multiple boards.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you very much. Yes, Councilmember Willis?
Shouldn't we allow those boards to just submit who they recommend for appointment to their board? And we act upon those recommendations? And if they have, if someone is not selected for that board, and they have a second or third choice for another board that might be open, they automatically get rotated to that board for consideration, rather than just being out of hand dismissed? I don't think it's for us to determine what that board wants to submit to us. I don't think that's fair to that board to, for us to take out of their hands who they want to have on their board.
Mayor, if I may add?
Yes, please.
One of our applicants had previous, the one that I can, off the top of my head, say that she applied for, or she showed interest in multiple boards, had been interviewed by Community Development. And the board that she had listed as number one did not have any more vacancies. So since she included CLS, we added her to our list.
Okay. I'm not advocating for, I think, anything other than we don't, I think we all have a desire to improve our board appointment procedures. We express that. And when I saw this board appointment, I just paused and said, we're doing something really well to get 11 interested. Over here, we've got, you know, those seem like some recent changes that really were effective. We have one applicant, and just trying to look at the big picture here.
I agree with Councilmember Willis. If, we've only got one, and the board recommends that this person becomes, comes and sits on their board, then we should take their, you know, their recommendation, as in the last applicant to this one. You've got boards that have people, you know, vacancies for what, three years? And they're sitting there, and they could use the extra person. And we're, I feel like we should do the recommendation of the board. We're hindering our board by not allowing those that are qualified to be on it.
And Mayor Morrison, I, I'm having a gap after the board makes a recommendation because of the fact, like Councilmember Willis said, on the number two of their application, on page two, they can select, you know, all of the boards in order of their interest. I want to ensure that we don't lose applicants if they don't get on one board that may have talents on other boards. That's, that's something that, we don't want to lose them being able to serve for the city on a board. So I'm not sure what the process is for those folks, whether they're just, you know, once the positions are filled on boards that they selected for number one and two, or they just, well, you didn't get on that board? Or are we going in and allowing them to be interviewed with the other boards? And it sounds like with Molly, that that's happening, because you just said there was a crossover, right? But is that happening with any, you know, if someone came to apply for the planning and zoning and didn't get on that one, would they, would that apply? You know, is it something being applied equally across all of the boards? To where we ensure that they are able to serve on one of them? If interested?
I agree. And I love that we rank. I think that, I don't know if other communities do that, but I, it's, I think that's one of the goals of ranking, is to do exactly what you're saying. Thank you. Yes, I, I'm, board advisory appointments were, were, just as we said, for years, here doing it. And I think this recent one is a good example of some of the challenges, just to understand who's responsible, the procedures. I think we can improve there. And with this, this board member serving on the Board of Adjustment, previously served, do we have any other applicants that we know of for the Board of Adjustment? Being that there's two vacancies?
Dave, do you have any information on that?
My understanding is we have one additional applicant for the Board of Adjustment.
So that would take us to six if that appointed. Thank you, Councilmember Davis.
I'm going to bring this up in Agenda number seven, which is back in 2022, Resolution 2022-28. If you look at number 11, it says that although we, council should trust that the boards have done their due diligence and accept their efforts. There's a whole applica, I'm not going to read all of it. But, you know, that's something that we all agreed on, and we signed it. Councilmember Jackson, I know it's new to you, but the rest of us signed that. And we agreed that we should go, we should respect their due diligence and accept their efforts. So I think do with the recommendation of the board says. Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Dave, if there's another applicant, why are we not interviewing them today, too?
Great question. That came in after our last Board of Adjustment meeting, as I recall. And our Board of Adjustment meets very infrequently, maybe two, three times a year. So oftentimes, we'll have So oftentimes, we'll have to sit on an application for a BOA appointment for a long time. And that dissuades certain folks. And frankly, a lot of folks aren't interested in Board of Adjustment. The P&amp;Z and Molly's boards seem to be the two most popular ones. So when we do get an applicant, we're very excited. And I will say too, in the last year, we've had to cancel publicly noticed Board of Adjustment meetings because we couldn't get a quorum. So.
Just a comment, Mayor. And I asked the city clerk to correct me if I get any of this wrong, but the procedure, to my knowledge, has always been a first come, first served. So if, let's say there's a board that meets only once every six months, like the Board of Adjustment could be one of those boards. They'll collect applications for people indicating interest in the Board of Adjustment as one of their selections. And all of those that get in before that board meeting happens will get interviewed if that was one of the ones they wanted. But you might get another board that only meets monthly. And then you, you would get all those that come in timely for that board and then, of course, the board holds their meeting. Actually, technically, the agenda goes out and it's too late to add them after the agenda. But you've got a matter of, a stacking queue of people lining up, in the case of Culture and Leisure Services, nine of them stacking up up to that point where we had an agenda to put out, well, let's put all nine of them on there if they can. And then we have that meeting and there might be a 10th or 11th or 12th one that apply after that. Well, there may not be a vacancy after that. So it's kind of been a first come, first served, kind of stack them all in as you can and pack them into that meeting if they can. This is a great problem to have. With Board of Adjustment, we haven't had applicants. I'm so grateful for Arvo being here. But in the case of Culture and Leisure Services, we've got now nine of them that all want to be packed into this one meeting. That'd be great. That's a great problem to have for, for two vacancies, I think it is, assuming they can all show up. And then we run into a problem perhaps of maybe somebody says, I would love to be there for that meeting, but I can't. I've got a family trip planned or whatever, I can't be there. They might, do they miss that opportunity? That's a good question. Do we hold everybody off? Does the board, and how do we handle that? And what I directed Molly to do for the Culture and Leisure Services Board is give the board their choices. Give them their options. You can do this, you can do this. I think there's four choices that they can look at it. Then that board can make a recommendation and on how they want to proceed and they will proceed and that recommendation will come to council with that. Not only their, who they recommended, but how they got there.
Thank you. I think, so when an application comes in, we're immediately processing it over to get it on the agenda?
It goes to the department that's in charge of that agenda?
Yes.
To put this person on if you can.
But it goes to the board for a recommendation?
Yeah.
And then obviously it comes to the council. So I, I would like to have, I mean, in the end, having a minimum of a few candidates is, is to me, just like when we put a bid out, there's a reason why we have to get more than one. I don't know, well, I think, I guess you spoke to him. Did, how did he find out about it?
We ran into each other at Publix in the chicken line. At the deli.
Lemon pepper rotisserie?
Yeah, it's delicious.
And so, and then you suggested?
I said, we'd love to have you be a board member again if you'd like to apply. And that was it.
Okay. Got it. And with the process that we followed since for Culture and Leisure Services is similar or the same to this process? I guess that's, if I can confirm that?
We don't do anything differently.
No, as they come in, as they are supposed to, whoever, you know, emails us, they, that email goes directly, sorry. The email that we receive with the application goes directly to the director or directors that the applicant has expressed interest in serving on their board.
Um, you know, because they can check off whatever they're interested in.
So wouldn't necessarily send something to Molly if they didn't check off Culture and Leisure Services Board. And then other times, people can walk those applications in and staff knows that they're either supposed to walk that application to the city clerk's office or go ahead and scan it and send it to us in an email saying, we received this today. And as soon as we get that, if, if we're at our desk and we're able to do it, we send it to either Molly or David Dickey for.
Yeah. Mayor, the applicant you had tonight is an interesting situation because, as I indicated earlier, we don't, the BOA hardly ever, we, I think we've met twice last year, just grabbing that number, but it wasn't more than three. So we sat on Arvo's application for, oh, it had to have been six months.
Since November 17th, 2023.
Yeah. So what is that, December, January, February, March, April? Seven months. That was close. And that's, that's one of the challenges we have with some of the boards. I mean, if, and I'm not, I'm not arguing with you, Mayor. I'm saying if we, if we're to wait to get two or three applicants before we bring them to the council in a, in a group for our BOA, maybe, it may be a while. So I, I like the idea. I think it's important for you to be able to have a choice, but it's, that needs to be considered as well.
I know, you know, when you say sit on an application, you're talking about you've received it from, I guess, the city clerk's office?
Yes.
And you, what does that mean?
That means we interview them right away to make sure that they're, that, when I say we interview them, I generally meet with the folks. As you, as you indicated, there's, they can select one through six or one through five and oftentimes they do. And so if, say if there's an applicant from, has, P&amp;Z is number one. We have a full P&amp;Z board, so obviously they can't have their first choice. So we'll sit down and talk with them. We'll meet with Molly as well and just to see what their specific desires are and their interests and their strengths and how, how that, how that may marry up with what our, what our openings are in our boards. So when I say we sit on it, we'll interview an applicant and it may be months before we actually have an opportunity to take them to the board to get interviewed. That's what I meant.
Part of that time spent with you or Molly is also sharing options with them about, well, this board's full, but this one has two vacancies and they're going to meet in two weeks.
And this one, if you want to wait a month, they have three openings.
So you share the options with them and then they can tell you, oh, boy, I'd like to go for that one then.
Right.
And that helps kind of steer the process.
Right.
So just to be clear, you say sit on though, what, I don't, I still don't understand what that means.
When I, when we get an application from the city clerk's office?
Yes.
And if, say it's for Planning and Zoning Board. So we'll interview that person. And if, let's, Board of Adjustment is probably more appropriate, like Arvo, I'm going to use him as a specifically as an example. Sounds like we got that application in November. I can't tell you the day we interviewed him, but it was, let's just say it was even December. We waited a month, which I can't imagine we did that. So we waited a month and the Board of Adjustment didn't meet until last month, April sometime, I believe. So that was, that would be December, January, February, March, April. That would be five months that we weren't able to take action on that application.
Got it.
With the board for them to be able to make a recommendation. So that's what I mean by sitting on it.
So the next available board meeting, you're not sitting on it getting through board? You don't skip a board meeting?
No, no, no.
So it's immediately, the first available board meeting, any interviews as you were explaining?
First come, first served.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Willis?
I'm probably one of very few on this dais that have been through the process. And I had my one through six and the, my first choice was not going to meet because they did not have enough to meet. So.
That's right.
I got to go to the second one because that was the first opportunity. And I was declined from the second one because it was not my first choice. That was the total reason.
I remember that.
Yes, yes. But they never sat on anything. I mean, it was, you know, well, we can't, there's not enough people to vote on you. So they couldn't meet. So it just opted to the next one. And I think that the way that the boards have been operating, if they maintain that procedure is, is appropriate. And if they have nine people to interview, they're going to want to send however many vacancies they have. They'll send those to us. And if we agree with all three of them or four, however many there might be, then that, to me, is appropriate for us to do. But to ask the board to just send all of them up here just usurps what we've asked them to do in the beginning. We asked them to send us recommendations for whatever we send to them. Board members should be the same, so.
I, I just did not understand the process and I didn't know that, that city staff, I didn't, that was helpful, went through that. I didn't have to go through that to be on the city council. And so we appoint them. Ultimately, we are responsible for those decisions to the public. Boards in the past have made decisions that I strongly disagree with. I do not believe we're in a rubber stamping entity. We have to make the final decision. We lean on their knowledge, subject matter to dive in on a specific area. And so in the past, it has been, got one, appoint one, got one, appoint one. Thank you, thank you, thank you, as they're coming through. And today, we are coming off the heels of an exciting opportunity to improve how we appoint. And I wanted to make sure that the, the methods that we used that yielded 11 interested applicants is the same that we have one and three vacancies. And if it, if that's the same or if we need to extend, that's fine. I don't have the answers, but understanding our rules of procedure and, and working as efficiently as we can. I certainly understand what it means now, next available meeting. I don't have any other comments on this. I'm fine with moving forward and thank you for discussion on that matter.
And I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2024-03.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Davis, second by Councilmember Willis to approve Resolution Number 2024-03. Any further discussion? That's good. City clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Councilmember Jackson?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Cullen?
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
Okay. We are at 6:58 PM. And we are now complete, or just finished the consent agenda, moving on to items for action. Number five is to discuss the findings of the wastewater sufficiency analysis requested by council at June 21st, 2022, city council meeting and support staff's recommendation to proceed with the 5% wastewater rate increase for fiscal year 2425 as set forth in the 2022 analysis. We had a, I think everyone, well, like, exception of Councilmember Jackson, had a chance to review this analysis. And at that time, we were looking at, making a five-year decision. I think we made the five-year decision, but we wanted to check in annually and see how those projections are going instead of, you know, making such a long-term decision. City manager?
Yes, sir. That's a great summation. I would just add that we do the wastewater revenue sufficiency analysis every five years to make sure that this important utility is healthy. We, we put a plan in place that looks at the revenues and the expenses over a five, over the past previous five years, but also projecting over the next five years. We say, okay, these are the rates we have. If we stay with this, we're going to have to, you know, we're, we're going to eventually run out of money, so we have to do annual increases, you know, but they have to make sense. The amount of increase needs to make sense. So we put a projection in there that not only looks at operations, but it also looks at the surplus. You need to have a healthy surplus to make sure you can bounce back if there's a critical need or a critical malfunction. So the, what the wastewater sufficiency analysis did for the first year was said, we want to, we recommend, here's your rate. First year, we recommend a seven and a half percent increase and that will yield us a surplus of X. Year two, we recommend a sur, an increase of 5%. That will yield us a surplus of Y. But what happened last year when we looked at this, the seven and a half percent, we had gone through an unexpected inflationary period where employees' wages went up, we were paying off SRF loans, we had, materials were costing a lot more. Things got a lot more expensive awful fast back then. And we, we were talking about this last year and we realized there's no way we're going to hit the surplus if we stay at seven and a half percent. But staff recommended we did, we'd hold the line at seven and a half percent because this inflationary period can't last forever. It's going to have to have a cooling off period. We, we all know that, this, it goes in cycles. So last year, we recommended, we hold the line, don't increase, don't try to hit that surplus number, just hold the line at seven and a half percent as recommended. This year, fast forward 365 days, here we are again. The economy has not completely slowed down. We're still dealing with inflation, but I don't think it's as bad as it was. But we're still not going to ever hit that surplus because of all the impacts of inflation over the previous two years. It almost makes the study kind of like, you're never going to hit those numbers. It's just not going to happen over the five-year horizon, given the economic cycles. So we're faced again with making a decision, a recommendation, do we go with 5% or do we go with something higher? Well, to hit that surplus that year two projection, year three projection was asking for, we'd have to raise it 12% instead of 5%. And, and we just, we don't think that's going to be necessary for the same reasons, because we will have a surplus. It won't be, John, I'm going to get rough numbers here, 507, $600,000 surplus, it'll be a $150,000, $200,000 surplus at the 5% range. And we're, we're still comfortable with that, kind of riding it out. Next year may be different, but what staff is recommending, we, we stay with the 5% as recommended and not increase it. It's also important to note that we do have contingency funding in the enterprise funds that if something terrible does happen, it's not like we're out of money. There's still contingency funds in there. John, did I miss anything?
Nope, that's on the, on the money.
So we're recommending we stay with the 5% as recommended, Mayor.
Thank you. Do we have the rate study? I don't, I think that these numbers were extrapolated on the, the last attachment. I don't know that the project, the table that was provided, but it would have been 2022 that we approved it. I don't think you've had a chance to really dive into that. I, I would, I would encourage that because what I think city staff has done here is pulled, the first recommendation was the seven and a half percent as our city manager explained, and we are now into, they recommend 5%. So, and then it goes 5% again and then it steps down to 2%. It's like a five, two and a half. And so my, my question is around, there's two, there's several projections, but there's this income projection, which is, you know, taking the percentage rate that we, that's tough, that's the revenue, sort of like enterprise funding, a business here. The O and M, I can't recall, but those line items, expenses, so I think O and M, so can we go to the last table that was provided? Keep going to the, thank you very much. One more.
Right there.
No, one more?
One more.
Oh, that, that's the projected, I would just go into the final.
Go all the way up. Down, I'm sorry, down.
Thank you.
Keep going. Keep going, one more. There you go.
So, thank you. That's perfect. So the first column, Study 2425, this is saying, these items according to the study, this is what it projected, right? So if I went back, I can see where you were earlier, you don't need to go back to this, but detachment two shows five, the top number there, $5,418,100 was projected with a 5% increase at the time. Today, the next column, current, I'm just staying on that top line, utility revenue, is we are looking at, I guess, $400,000 short. If we stay at the rate we're on to, if we do not increase at all, is that what that's saying?
Right.
So if we do nothing, we are.
That's the FY '24 estimate, gets you $5 million and then with the projected that we're going to do in 2425, that gets you up to $5. we're gonna do in 2425, that gets you up to 5.3.
But today, we're, we set the rates 7.5% higher last year.
Last year, yep.
If we do not increase at all, is this, that's the number that we would, we would achieve $5 million according to?
Right, and we'd end up 70, based on all the projections, $74,000 would be a deficit then, in the current, based on the estimates right now. Because we're only through-
Yes.
April, May.
But with a, but if we increase it 5%, it adds another 250,000, just on the top line right now.
Right.
So a five, so that's, that's one decision that the rate will achieve. The second projection, which was provided by them, is the most important one I want to focus on, because that was surplus. So that's, I guess we could call it the bottom line, right? That's what, after expenses, what would be left over. Those projections were dependent on achieving certain costs. And from my understanding, following that same logic, or the formula, I guess, we had O and M, net revenue, debt service, non-operating expenses. We haven't totaled all those up, but it's, I guess, yeah, $561,000 more than, I mean, sorry, less. So it's about $5 million in expenses if they were totaled, because to have the 561,000, it seems like, left over. And so that's what the projection said our cost should be. However-
With the study back when it was done, in the middle of 2021 or-
Twenty-two.
Twenty, yeah, twenty, oh, 22, you, you went ahead and, that was the first year that we instituted this. But just about six months before you approved it, that's when the study was completed, yeah. So, and it, and the study said at that time that when we got to this point for next year, 2425, that this was a yield 561,000, based on all the data that the people that did the study had at the time. But of course, they didn't know what the inflation would be, what the salaries would be, what the, what the debt would be, but they, they made those, they made those assertions. But, you know, it was a study. So what you had me do is say, okay, John, go back, see what the run rates are and where you believe we're gonna end up. And when I show what we're gonna end up with, we're close to, let's just round off and say, well, we'll have a $200,000 surplus, and that's a 5%. So we're not going to raise the utilities, you know, to 12% to achieve the 566, because that's a bit unrealistic to do that, and even to do that for the, for the citizen. So we're saying that we are fine with the 5% this year and have a 200% surplus, because the city and the wastewater fund does have about $400,000 in our unrestricted R and R funds, which keeps us healthy. So we're not gonna, in other words, we're not gonna just go ahead and raise it to 12% because that's what the study said. We're seeing real time what's happening. We're healthy in wastewater and stormwater, not that that has to do with it, but, so, with that being said, you know, that's why staff recommends just stay with the 5%. We don't wanna raise the rates on the citizens.
So we would be raising the rates on the citizens by 5%?
Oh, well, we're, we're taking, yeah, of course, to stay, to stay in line, to make sure we're achieving enough.
I know, but-
Yeah, but we're still doing a 5%, but we're not doing a, we're not doing a 12% to achieve the surplus that the study said.
I know we can, yes.
But we are raising, of course, we're raising it 5%. We're gonna raise it 5% next year.
But where did the 12%, where does the 12% come, was that in the study? Was that provided in the study, or was that a number that you determined we needed to hit to hit their surplus numbers?
There you go, there you go.
See, so they didn't recommend a 12%.
No, 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 we-
They said if we keep operating costs at this level, and your revenue is at that level, you should have a surplus of this. And so instead of just moving the percentage, that's the easy way. I would like to figure out, can we cut costs? Because column two, current, is 74,000 deficit. If we do not increase at all, 0%. The reason we wanted to look at this annually, or at least I'll speak for myself, is so that we could figure out, I'm glad we didn't approve this at once, because it would be a pre-approved 5% rate, like we did with the-
Already been approved.
So if, if we, what are we deciding on tonight?
The city council, when it reviewed the revenue sufficiency analysis performed by your consultant in 2022, adopted a resolution establishing a five-year rate schedule that was recommended by the rate consultant. So the, in 2425, the rates go up 5%.
Right.
Pursuant to the resolution that the council previously approved. What staff is telling you is that the revenues and expenses, your surplus, projected surplus is less than, than, or your surplus is projecting to be less than what was projected.
Right, but the 5%, the 5% required, it stays in line with the study the council approved in 2022.
So there's no action, there's-
So that's all we're doing is keeping the 5%.
Well, I just wanna make it clear, you know, the council too, is that, I mean, the five, the 5% increase has already been, for next year, has already been approved.
That's right.
Absent a adoption of a resolution modifying that 5% increase, that 5% increase would go into effect October 1. And what staff's telling you is, in order to meet your surplus that was projected by Raftellus, you know, you, you would have to do a higher increase than what you've already approved, right?
That's correct. You'd have to go up to 12%.
But that, you know, again, that's not, that action would require a resolution of the council to increase the rates above the, of the 5% that it will be going into effect October 1, right?
Right. And staff recommends to stay with what council approved in 2022 with a 5% increase.
Unless the council changes.
Unless the council changes it.
Yep.
Thank you. Can we go to the agenda cover, as you, just the front page? The subject of this is, discuss the findings of the-
First page.
Wastewater revenue sufficiency analysis requested by council at the June 21st, 2022 city council meeting, and support staff's recommendation to proceed with the 5% wastewater rate increase for fiscal year. That, when I read that, that's, I understand what you're saying, and I can actually-
I mean, that could have been probably worse, Smith, a little bit differently.
So if we take no action, 5% is happening?
Right.
If we wanted to, but the intent to review this was to, to change the resolution if needed.
Exactly. The council wanted to reserve the right to review, to see where you stand, whether the projections that Raftellus made come to fruition, and whether the council thinks it's in the best interest to modify the rates. So for the council to modify the rates would require another resolution. Hypothetically, let's just do it hypothetically, the council could reduce the rates, the increase relatively straightforward manner. Any increases in utility, water and sewer utility rates require a much more complicated special notice requirement.
And what I would like to add is, as I've been asked to do this analysis in April, and we have May, June, July, August, and September, so I would just, I would be, tell council to be cautious in the, not to reduce below the 5% that was recommended, because if for some reason revenues come in lower, we could end up in the red. So this, it's, you know, because I'm doing an analysis halfway through the year with run rates, and I don't know what's, I, I don't know what else is going to happen with the other items, so, right now, I'm saying, if the things keep going like they are, we'll be $185,000 in the black, so.
All I'm saying is, we can push up on percentages, but we also, we didn't, we didn't have an analysis on lowering operating costs, because we went over, we exceeded their projections in operating costs. We're only talking about how it fell short on the top line opposed to that. And of course, that's gonna shrink the surplus. My, I, my hope is that we, we take a hard look at this, and it sounds like we would need to, to bring the resolution forward. If, if, when you're saying a change to the attorney, it's, we are increasing to the 5% pre-approved by the resolution 2022, but if we go over that already approved 5%, that process is a little bit more cumbersome-
Correct.
-to lower it. Okay.
To lower it, it's less cumbersome, right? It would just need to be, you know, a general notice, and then the council would have a public hearing on the, on the rate resolution to reduce the rate for the next year. If you wanna increase it above 5%, that would be considered a rate increase. And a rate increase requires different notice requirements.
But we are already increasing their rate from last year's rate.
Because, correct, because the council adopted a five-year rate schedule in 2022.
Okay. Thank you for hearing me out. My hope is that, well, we're gonna be meeting Thursday on the CIP. Once again, revenue's gonna be a big part of that conversation. I think here, we can see that last page that we were at, is if we stay the course, we're projecting a $74,000 deficit. My hope would be that we can figure out ways to lower costs so that we find $74,000 to cut in the final six months, and then approach whatever percentage, keep it, but that's all, those are my comments. I would be interested in considering to change it at a future meeting by resolution. It's hard to say until Thursday comes.
I, I would disagree. I don't think we should lower it. We already know if we lower it, we're gonna go in the red, so as the projected that we have now. So I don't think we should lower it to go into the red. I mean, I don't wanna raise taxes, I don't wanna raise it 5% either, but I mean, I don't want to go into the red, so I would be against lowering it. This is what we, we agreed on in 2021, too, whatever, so.
We agreed to review it annually.
Yeah, I would think it would, we should not lower it and take the chance of going into the red.
Just to comment back, but I, we shouldn't go into red. What I'm saying is, but do you agree that we could, should look at, we're projecting a 74,894 deficit if we stay the course? Should we look at ways to cut costs? It's, there's more variables to the equation.
I had questions about that.
That's my-
Because I'm, I'm, as you said, I'm unfamiliar with this, so I'm trying to get my hands-
So what would you like to cut?
Hold on, hold on, John.
That's my question, what do you wanna cut?
I'm confused.
That's okay. We don't need to take any action tonight, but just, we need to maintain order. Councilmember Jackson was speaking.
In the attachment two, in the middle, in the paragraph, it speaks of the increasing cash flows are important to help the utility continue to fund the capital improvement projects during and beyond the forecasted period, and that the positive cash flows will allow the utility recover the unrestricted operating reserve funds that'll be depleted while implementing the capital improvements. I was trying to line those up with the capital improvement list, to try to understand which capital improvements we're looking at. And I know that we'll be doing that in this Thursday's meeting, but I know some of those we've already got, you know, that are well in, well on their way as far as rehabbing the, the clarifier. But there were a lot of these, and I was wondering and wanting to make sure that the ones that I'm seeing, I understand in relation to this paragraph about what the capital improvement projects will be for this, that could impact that cash flow.
Councilmember Jackson-
Are those expenses?
Uh, to add- John, John, we need to be able to stay on-
I am, I'm going to clarify. Councilmember Jackson would need to read the 20-page report to see what that means, and you weren't here.
But John, the mayor's chairing the meeting, let him-
Oh, okay, okay.
I'd like for her to be able to finish and let the-
Okay, and then if I may speak after that, if I may speak after that.
I think you're all, we always give you a chance to speak.
Okay, all right.
Absolutely, thank you.
Yeah, so I just wanted to be able, as someone that is new, to line those up so that I know what's coming next year versus the projects that I'm seeing. I was trying to do that, so, yes. John?
I was just gonna say that some of the verbiage that you're reading, there's an 18, 20-page, that, that's why we get Raftellus, a consulting company, that, that has to take all these factors into effect. There's a lot to, you know, there's a lot to project with capital projects and what have you. But if you were to read the 18-page, 20-page report that I got, which I, I can send it to you tomorrow, it might give you a better understanding of everything, you know, and we can't oversimplify what's happening here, and I'm taking run rates and where we're at, and then you're looking at, that's why they have these comprehensive sheets. That's why the city pays $18,000 to do this, because they're taking in all these, all these different factors. My final, my final statement is this, and when I'm asked to look at an analysis and see where we're at during the year, that's exactly what I do based on what's in front of me, what's actually happening now. I can't predict what's gonna happen 14 months from now. I'm just not, I'm just not that good. I don't know what capital projects are gonna, not make it or not make it. But just by looking at it, at that way, you, it allows me to say confidently, if we keep what what council did, that approved in 2022, then the 5% works for the city, and it leaves about $185,000 in surplus.
And I just wanna understand what the capital improvement projects are and the importance of them, so I'll read that, and I'm appreciative of you sending that to me, what you'll do.
And remember, those projects in this book may have changed since then, which just changes the whole-
But I think it's important for us to look at those and understand. I, I'm one, and I, I mentioned it before with the, the flooding issue. I like to look at things, and I like to prioritize them. And so that piece was missing from that report for me, and I'm appreciative to hear that, and I'll be happy to get that and read that, because I wanna ensure that everything we're doing are necessary things. We don't want anything happening to our wastewater, especially during a storm or anything like that, right? So we don't wanna cut in areas that we shouldn't be cutting, but we also, I'm, I'm very cognizant to the fact that right now, the economy is hard. Not only are we seeing the inflationary results within this report even, of what's going on with our economy, our citizens are too. And so it's of interest to me to ensure that we try to be as lean and mean as we can be, and make sure that we're, we've got ourselves covered in the same token.
Okay, and just one final point, very important. If council decides to change up or down here, I need to know by July 15th, because COCO needs 60 to 90 days to change, to update the rates.
So you need it by yesterday?
July 15th. If you were gonna change it, we'd have to get something passed by July 15th.
Okay, okay.
So.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Director Delaio.
Thank you, John. Mayor Protim, any comments, any other comments here? Okay, so yes, my hope would be that, I think we're gonna move, we're moving forward. This change would not happen before July 15th. So rates aren't gonna increase tomorrow, is that right?
No, the, the, these rates are effective October 1st. I'm just saying, to give COCO enough time, they usually tell me between 60 and 90 days, they need to have this to upload it, and we have to provide that to them.
If there's a change in the rate.
If there's a change. If there's not a change, then, yeah. And I, I would just say that I'm not sure what, how you could project out some of these other capital projects, which we haven't decided on yet, to see how this will affect your, this 5%. That's gonna be an interesting, I might have to call in another consultant to figure that out, because I don't know what those numbers are. That's all I got.
Thank you. I think there's no action needed here. It's just, it was to look under the hood and see how it's going. It's just, it was to look under the hood and see how it's going. Thank you, John, for putting these numbers together and, uh, helping us understand that it is, it is hard to look far out. I mean, we made a five-year decision, and that's why I think what we did here was really wise, um, so thank you. If there's nothing else, we can move on. Just say if any desire to change that, we got our deadline July, uh, 15th, uh, so I think it probably need to be next, next month, the June meeting, so you have enough time. All right. Thank you. Moving on to the next agenda item, number six, last item for action, uh, which is Resolution Number 202402, Amending the Defined Contribution Retirement Plan for General Employees of the City of Cape Canaveral, Florida, Providing Further Appeal of Prior Inconsistent Resolution Severability and Effective Date. City Manager?
Yes, sir. Uh, this is, I believe, the third appearance of this item, um, because council's been wanting to keep it in front of them in lieu of the, in light of the fact that we've got a budget and CIP items, and this could have a potential increased impact on the budget. Um, was discussing this with staff in the city attorney this afternoon, and we, we did find, um, an inconsistency that I want to point out, uh, that could affect the council's decision on this item or even to put it off to another time, but, um, what that is, is the, the issue of immediate vesting. Uh, we talked about moving, currently the vesting period is a five-year period before you get 100% vested. It's year one, year this, year two, year that, and you step towards 100% at five years, and the, the process that, or the, the information that we were given, or HR was given through, um, what's the organization, not, not Florida League of Cities?
FMIT.
FMIT, yeah.
Yeah, they're the same.
We're saying that, you know, this is one area you can be a little more attractive is bring forward your vesting period, and the way that the ordinance is written right now, it says we're proposing immediate vesting. However, that's not actually what we wanted. The inconsistency is that we meant at six months probation, not immediate, not today, not the day you're hired, but at six months, and there's a corollary, um, to that, and that is, the employee, the employer-paid portion of that doesn't actually happen until 12 months after, uh, an employee starts. The, the employee-paid portion can start immediately, but the employer-paid portion doesn't start for 12 months. So I want the council to be aware of that, that if you move that immediate vesting, go to any shorter-term investing, vesting period, you would also want to consider moving that start time for city contributions to, to match with that. Right now, it's at a year, because that's when the vesting periods start to accrue, but if we were going to move it, move it to at six months, we would also then have to move the council, the city approval, city contribution funds to six months. Just want to say that those two need to align. Wherever the vesting period stopped, or begins, that's when the, the city contributions begin. They need to align with that, and this doesn't specify it that way, so I want to point out that inconsistency. So with that kind of covered, let's talk about what this does in general. We were approached, we, we approached, um, the, the consultant about this, about becoming more competitive, or are we competitive where we are? We have a defined contribution, which is to say we don't have a pension. What, what gets put into these accounts is what the accounts are and how they grow or not grow over time. You get out of it what gets put into it. And currently, um, city employees have the option to put 3% into a, a 457B retirement account, up to 3%, and city council will, I'm city council, the city will match up to 3%. If you do 1%, you get 1, 2, 2, 3, 3, but no more than 3 in that. And then the city also puts 7% into the 401A, so there's a 7% employer contribution and a 3% employee contribution totaling a 10%. Uh, so the proposal was, well, you could go, some cities are doing 11 and 5, and we put that out to council. We said that, that would be a $181,000 hit each year just to change that, if we wanted to do that. Yes, it does help us to attract and retain talent, um, and we could consider that. And the city council talked about this back in March 19th, and the city council, uh, then discussed two different options. Well, what if we did, instead of 11 and 5, what did we, we did 9 and 4, or maybe 10 and 3? So the, the analysis was done, and there are $90,000 and $92,000 respectively, uh, impacting the budget. So the reason we're doing this is because we need to know if we need to plug this number into the budget. Obviously, it would help us be, be, um, more attractive to new employees and help us to retain talent as well. Natalie, did I miss anything? Natalie's our HR director. If you haven't met her, anybody new, Natalie's terrific.
No, I mean, it was originally proposed in the March meeting that it would be implemented after the probationary period to remove the vesting and, um, start the contributions after six months. That was the original proposal. It just wasn't written into the resolution.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Council, and any comments on this? I had a chance to speak with the city attorney, and I think when I left off, we were wanting to bring this in again with the budget, but I think you and I were talking about, um, the importance of this is so that when we, the budget for it, I mean, right, to, to plan, we know what today is happening, and so my hope is that we would be able to make a decision after we look at, at everything. It's hard to vote these through individually prior, because we sort of come in with, you know, only so much room, and I think we had some data between the first one and the second one that helped, um, understand what the other cities were. Was that in the last meeting, that that was provided?
It was, yeah. We had gone out to the 74 or so municipalities around us, but we only received about 11 responses, where Felsmer was about the most equal to us, and they had removed the vesting and could start contributing immediately.
Thank you. So. That's all my comments is, um, not to beat a drum here, but I did want to wait till Thursday.
Excuse me, you said you wanted to wait till Thursday?
Before taking action. Yeah, I think the whole point of this was to, to get through the budget and then decide on what we wanted to do.
Mm-hmm. Well, I, I know we seriously need to consider being as attractive as possible, because we are getting younger, not us on the dais, but our employees, um, because we're, we have retirements, we have people leaving, whatever, and we're, we've been fortunate enough to attract some younger talent, very, uh, very helpful, and I would like to see us be able to keep them, so we need to, we need to adjust it, I'm sure, but, uh, I would like to see us make a, a good effort at retaining this younger talent we have.
Thank you. Councilmember Davis?
No, I'm pretty much deciding.
Thank you. Jackson?
With me, it's timing and having my, a good understanding of the budget overall and the capital improvement projects and, and everything, so with me, it's timing. I think we need to be competitive, but I want to make smart decisions and I'm getting my hands around all of this.
Thank you. Mayor Protim?
Um, my question is, don't we need to decide on a rate so we know how much it's going to impact the budget? Or is, you want to wait till Thursday to decide on the rates?
Instead of deciding on a rate and then go and setting a budget around one item, I'd like to set a, a budget and, and come back to the rate that could, now knowing that we have all of these other expenses, how much do we want to provide as a raise for the city employees, opposed to, let's give this percentage, and I'm saying raise, excuse me, um, increase in contributions to those, uh, retirement? Does that make sense? It was just, we're choosing a percentage.
Well, what if, I mean, what if we do the budget and there's not $90,000? What are, what are we going to do? I mean, if we know we have this amount of money that we need to take care of our employees, that has to be circled into the budget. That's what I'm not, I'm not, I mean, if we decide on a rate and we know how much it's going to cost, then.
Mm-hmm.
You know what I'm saying?
I do. I think we definitely would see, I mean, today, we, they provided great numbers to see where we are today. We should definitely budget for that.
Okay.
And so then the difference in our head, um, city staff proposes a budget to us, and to me, they've done a lot of the legwork that, those options that were given, we can see.
Okay, gotcha.
Which one would be best.
And then my other question was, is it right that, uh, is six months vested or, or immediately has to match?
When the employer contributions begin.
Okay.
If, if the council wants to change that section, it should align. Um, so mayor, I think based on what I'm hearing the council discuss, maybe this is a good proposal. Um, if the council could make, um, um, consensus about that section, about the six-month probationary, that's when you're vested and that's when employer contributions start, that can give us the direction to amend this resolution and bring it back in June. By that time, you will have had the second CIP meeting and you can decide what you want to do with the rates and the resolution in June.
Okay, so not what, what amount we would budget to pay, but when they would become vested, that's, would be helpful?
That's, that's the direction tonight, yeah.
Recommendation is six months?
As, well, also that, and currently it's a five-year tiered vesting, and the recommendation from Jeremy was, uh, since it was low-hanging fruit, was to remove that altogether, because most places have removed that, and he was talking about the forfeiture account where it was only like $4,000 on average a year.
Yeah, so change that whole five-year tier thing to just at six months, your probation's over, if you've made it, you're vested, but along with that comes, and that's when the employer contributions start. So if, if that's the consensus of council, we can amend this resolution to make that cleared up, that, on that point.
And at the current rate, what is the impact to that? Financial?
To bring it forward six months?
Yes.
They had done it on the 57 employees, but they didn't, Jeff, or Jeremy didn't re-figure it. We could get that number.
Okay.
But we.
We could put that in to the next time you see it.
Yeah, because it's hard for me to vote when there's a number regarding it, and I don't know what it is.
Yeah, and who knows how many new employees we're going to get in the next six months, too.
Exactly.
We've had several leave that were at the higher salary levels, so.
But it gives us a baseline, you know, it would give us a baseline on making that decision.
Yeah, mayor, we can, we can take a stab at getting that number based on our vacancies, assuming they get, all get filled, and, uh, so if that's consensus, we'll clarify that item in section one to six months, and employer contributions begin. We'll bring back this item in June, clarified, but also we'll take a stab at the number of what that impact of moving forward six months would be.
That would be great, I think, and then we will approve the resolution or amend or do whatever.
Do whatever you want with it.
Okay. Does that sound good, council?
Yep.
Great, thank you.
Good, Natalie?
Yeah.
Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. City clerk, was that the consent? Did you get what you needed?
It was kind of long.
And I'll help you with the minutes.
Okay, great, so, uh, thank you all. Thank, yes, sir.
Thank you.
We are now complete with items for action. We move now on to items for discussion. We have three items, uh, excuse me, we have, I guess, four now, uh, with the addition. Um, council, we're at 7:40 PM. How about a break and come back and try to knock these discussion items out?
Sounds good.
Sound okay?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, let's try to reconvene at, uh, what do we want, 10:15?
10's good.
10, 7:50, let's come back. Thank you.[1478.61] Okay, we ready? All right, we good? All right, everyone. Called the meeting back to order. It is 7:53 PM, and we had just finished up the items for action, items five and six. We are now on to items for discussion. Item number seven. The first one is Discussion Regarding Resolution 2022-28, submitted by Councilmember Davis. Councilmember Davis, the floor is yours.
Yes. Back in, I believe, December 2022, this council decided to sign this resolution, which would allow meetings to be short and more effective. So I've decided to put this on as a refresher and a reminder, because due to the length of our meetings, and our special meetings, that we are not following these rules. And we all agreed to do it. We've all signed them, and we need to follow them, because people are getting very upset for the length of the meetings. It's costly as well, and people are feeling that council is unprepared when we have to go that long with this amount of questions. So I'm going to go over some of the key points, and then I have a couple of questions that I'm going to ask of council at the end. So with, on Resolution 2022-28, on the meeting, we agreed that it'd be key to holding shorter, more effective meetings to basically need to make a, to need to take a more effective role in holding each other accountable for time, management practices, applying the established rules of conduct, Robert's Rules of Conduct, Code of Conduct. And we would need to greatly reduce the length of our meetings. So if you look at item, if you look at number one, note the type and purpose of the meetings and prepared. I've talked to several people, again, who are getting very frustrated with the length of our meetings. This includes people that are here in the audience, that have an item on the agenda, or people are here just to watch, or people that are watching at home. So if you look at the application, it just says, "Knowledge and preparation of the meeting is key in limiting discussion times," and that, you know, if you have the questions, you should research and do study, and the city manager to facilitate by meeting one-on-one with council members is available for questions needed. I'm going to do this quick, so I don't take much time. Deviation from set agenda, time and management is key, excuse me, key is to shorter, effective meetings. Holding each other accountable to release lengthy discussions is irresponsible of each council member. And unscheduled items added on. There should be no deviation from the agenda. And, let's see, pulling topics from the consent agenda for minimal discussion can add time to the meetings. So in several of the past meetings, there have been items added on, and that's, this, I know, I can only speak for myself, but it catches staff and council off guard, and it just makes that we don't have the time to prepare. So any add-ons, I don't think, is productive for the meetings, because other council member can't, or it's, city manager can't effectively, you know, discuss the topic. Again, I'm going to go to number four, decisiveness. We should be clear, well-stated direction to move the item forward, and it just says, indecisiveness creates unclear, causes confusion, excuse me, creates unclear direction, causes confusion, and can result in negative financial impact. So one thing that I have found, and I don't know what other council feels, but I know when we're trying to get a consensus, sometimes I don't know that I've necessarily agreed, or shaken, or done my head, and then we've got a consensus. So I think each council, I would prefer to verbally say that we can have a consensus, or I consent to it, and that would help city clerk to verify with what, you know, that we all are approving, and we don't need a motion. More information needed. If you can, you find, this is number six, page three. If council finds it cannot move forward on an agenda item because of a question that cannot be answered at the time, and they need additional information before being able to vote on the agenda, they have two options: to move to request the item, to return to council at a future meeting, or to move to schedule a workshop. So here, some, the cause of some of our meetings going on and on is that we spend a lot of time with questions that technically could be answered by meeting with your city manager or city staff. And the people that I've talked to said that they are not impressed with the time that is spent asking the questions, and that they feel that it looks like council is unprepared, and that they, you know, that they should have followed through, or followed up with staff and city manager. And so any council can ask. Late-revealed critical information. It says, "Council members' knowledge of, having knowledge of critical information, new, unexpected, unanticipated, and very important information. Should make sure every effort in this information communicated to the city manager well before the meeting." By, this is, let me see what I say. It's critical, information is, when critical information is late-revealed during a council meeting that should have been brought up beforehand, it can cause the impression of not being transparent, leave the city manager unprepared to have an individual present to respond to late-revealed information, delays responses to a future meeting, leaves the city manager, staff, and council at a disadvantage, and leave council and staff to feel undermined and erode of public trust. I know for myself, when something like this has been added on or included, that I feel that I am not, you know, I don't have the chance to be prepared. I'm caught off guard. I don't know how other council members feel, but I don't, I honestly feel sometimes that we're being ambushed by the information being added on. And this has been occurring at a regular basis, so I feel that that's not acceptable to do that to staff and to other council members. Number nine, discussions ending, or discussions, ending discussions. It says, "Council should be mindful and respectful of all attendance and should avoid time-consuming, excuse me, and unproductive dialogue. Reinstating the same information repeatedly impairs the audience's level of engagement, may cause frustrated audience members to leave early, at worst can provoke disorderly behavior. Council members are free to express their individual opinions and be persuasive without attempting to wear down previously stated positions, as this behavior can consider bullying, threatening, and extends the length of the meetings." So we can do a Robert's Rule and call it a question, and if you, and anyone that wishes to end the debate, they can call Robert's Rule, and it has to be second. But, you know, the council always talks about spending the taxpayers' money. If you think about it, how expensive is it to the city for it to have the long meetings, whether it's a special meeting, a workshop, or meetings that go late? I've checked with staff, and it costs approximately $400 an hour. So if you think of a six-hour special meeting that we've had, that's $2,400 that it costs for that night. It's, if we go additional eight hours, or, excuse me, two hours, that's $800 that we're adding. So it may not seem much at first, but when you add it all up, that, you know, that's a lot for the city to have to take on, because we're not prepared, and we're asking, you know, we're taking, our discussions are on and on. Let's see. And the question I have is, an option to shorten the meetings, you can follow Robert's Rules, 48, or, excuse me, 43.8, maximum time for each person to speak. This would alleviate members asking repetitive questions or repeating the same information over and over. Robert's Rule states that a member can speak no longer than 10 minutes unless he obtains consent or a motion to extend limited, or limits of debate to 15 minutes, which requires a two-thirds vote without debate. So that's something I would like to consider. I, you know, at the end, I would like council to consider what they think is an appropriate time for each one of us to speak, and at that time, if we're, we go over the limits, then we need to help, hold each other accountable, because we just have to, we cannot keep going at six-hour meetings. Public cannot keep going at six-hour meetings. Staff cannot keep going at six-hour meetings. One thing I brought up, I forgot about time. We haven't considered the staff. The staff doesn't get overtime, so they haven't, instead, they go home late, or they come in early. So therefore, to make up for their time. So when, the only problem is, they're gone during regular business hours. So if the public wants to ask questions, other staff members want to ask questions, city manager wants to, we want to, they're not available, because they're taking the time off, because they have overtime. So that creates a problem in itself. One thing I mentioned earlier, information-only topics, information-only on the agenda are not for discussion, and we should refrain any dialogue on information items. And this is, oh, excuse me, this is the one I went over. Acceptance. Individual current, current council members should accept actions taken by the body. Council members may agree with those actions, past or present, but one vote carries. It should be respected. And as you look at the application, although new ideas can emerge, formal decisions are final, and further debate is unproductive. The concept equally applies to voluntary advisory boards. Council has the option to accept, modify, or reject council board recommendations. However, council should trust that board to have done all their due diligence. So my question to the council is, do we feel, what is the appropriate time we feel for everyone to have, to speak? Is it 10 minutes, 15 minutes, 20 minutes? Because speaking for two hours, three hours is not acceptable to the public, or I think to staff, or personally to me. So I'm open to what everybody thinks is acceptable, and then after that, we should try to hold each other accountable.
Thank you very much for going through that. Counsel, discussion item. Councilmember Davis has, I think, explained it.
Oh, we can't discuss. No, go ahead.
We can?
No, I'm sorry. I was thinking of something else.
Oh, no, that information, well, I think you were just going over the item 10 information.
Yes, sorry.
That's okay. I think, this resolution, 2022-28.
We've all assigned, I'm sorry.
Just one that you went through, which was helpful, but when you started talking about the time limit.
Mm-hmm.
Is that in here? Did you refer, or were you, you said Robert's Rules of Order?
Yes.
Are you referencing?
I'm referencing.
That wasn't in the resolution, I don't think.
Well, if you look at the resolution, it does say, let me look, let me find it. The workshop, okay. The workshop, okay. Holding each other accountable for management profits. In many cases, applying the already established Roberts Rules of, of order and code of conduct, so.
What page was that on, Councilmember Davis?
Uh, that's the front of the resolution 2022 dash 28. The, we're not, it's right after all the signatures, I believe.
So it's.
Right?
Uh, so it's in the Exhibit A attachment of the resolution?
No, it is, um, let me see, because I have it separate. It is. Yes, right, that's your second page. There is the agenda item in the next page, so it would be one of two is what it say, states.
Okay, okay, I see. One of two resolution of the resolution.
Before our signatures.
Okay, so it's the first page of the resolution. Got it. And I found it. It's in that third whereas paragraph. Applying, in many cases, already applying the established Roberts Rules of Order. So.
We just need to decide if we're going to apply some rule. Roberts Rule says 10 minutes and you're only allowed, let's see. Maximum member obtaining, having obtained the floor while debatable motion is immediately pending, can speak no longer than 10 minutes unless he obtains the consent of the assembly. Such permission can be given by unanimous consent or by a motion to extend of, of, of debate, which requires a two-thirds vote. And I mean, you can go into it that there's, they're saying you can only speak twice. There's several different things. We're talking in Roberts Rules forty-three, I guess. Well, it pretty much starts at forty-three, four, but it goes into all the different rules.
Okay, so we've, thank you. It, we use Roberts Rules of Order. This, we have, I think, some discretion on. We've talked about this in the past as well. I want to hear from the council. And one of the things I do like about Roberts Rules of Order, which guilty I've done, is giving everyone a chance to talk at least one time before the second person. So with that, I've spoke. Anybody else like to speak on this item? No particular order?
I'm scared too. I understand, um, Roberts Rules of Order and trying to go along with the, with the conduct so that you have effective meetings. So I, I am curious though, would we prefer to just move things that require discussion to workshops? Because workshops give you the ability to send, be there during the day and discuss what needs to be discussed to get the issues that you need to get resolved, taken care of, without impacting staff time. And I literally had a workshop and that was one of the things I got dinged for, but it, staff time was really, they were busy at that time. So where if council decides that we don't want to discuss or ask questions here, then that's just gonna, I, I would see that as increasing our number of workshops and things like that to be able to get business done. Because as everyone knows with sunshine laws, this is our place to get business done. It's our place to discuss and ask questions.
I'm not, oh, excuse me, are you done? I'm not saying not be able to ask questions, but when we sit here five-hour, six-hour meetings, it, and we're asking over and over the same question, instead of doing that, we should move it forward to the next meeting. And go to staff, go to city manager, or go to whoever you need to, to get the answers. Because we're sitting here for hours on, hours trying to get answers from staff that we could have gotten before. So I'm not saying don't ask questions. Don't be afraid of that. I'm not trying to say don't ask questions. I'm just saying, don't be repetitive. And yes, there will be items that come up or topics that come up during council meetings. But there is also items that you could ask, I'm not, I'm not picking on you, I'm looking at you, but I'm not picking on you. We could ask city manager or staff before. We could have all those answers before we come. And if something comes up, then that's fine. We, we have sure, certainly entitled to ask questions. Thing about workshops, again, think of the money. You know, we can't just have six, oh, it's a workshop, so we're gonna go six or eight hours for a workshop. I mean, we still have to be, have effective meetings for workshops. And we still have to be considerate to the, you know, the cost of all these meetings.
And what money are you talking about for a workshop when you have whomever is recording? And the clerk, and that's literally all you have to have for a workshop from what I understand. And I may be wrong. If I'm wrong, um, city attorney, please correct me. I want to do what needs to be done, but we, I'm, and I'm new at this, so I'm the one that's jumping out here saying these things. But, I mean, we have to get business done for our citizens. And if it takes extra time, it takes extra time, unfortunately. I go to, I go to staff and ask my questions beforehand. I do research. I come in with notes. I look at everything. I read everything. Um, so I, I appreciate what you're saying because I'm taking the time to do that. But there are some things that may be brought out during discussion that I'm not aware of and I might ask a question.
That's what I'm saying. There's no problem doing that. But when we're sitting here, I mean, I don't know, six-hour meetings are not appropriate. They're just, it's, it's, the staff is, it's hard on the staff, it's hard on us. It's hard on the citizens to sit there. So I'm, what I'm saying is if you have that many questions from what is being said, is, we should move it forward. So you can get those questions answered. And then at the next meeting, address them. But if you have that many questions that we have to spend two to three hours to, to discuss it, then obviously we're doing something wrong. And to the city or citizens, the ones that I have talked to, we look unprepared. We, they think we're not doing our homework because we have so many questions. And I don't want to, I don't want to look like I'm unprepared. I'm prepared when I come in here. I'm not saying, I'm sure everyone is prepared when they come in here. But six-hour meetings is not acceptable. And we have to find a way to shorten them. That's all I'm saying.
Councilmember Willis, or?
Well, I think, um, I mean, I agree, we need to shorten our meetings. We need to be more accountable to the public and, and be timely. Um, I think if we each come in here with preparation on each item to speak for five minutes, we, we are concise in what we're saying and we know what we're asking for. And we limit ourselves to five minutes initially. Now, again, to your point, Councilmember Jackson, sometimes new ideas come up. Uh, you hear from other council members and you suddenly have a new way of looking at it. Or a new question. Or you, you just haven't thought of it in that, in that vein. So you have to, you have to be able to move and be somewhat organic with it. Because this is our only shot. We can't walk outside and discuss it later. But I think if we each come in prepared to speak on, limit ourselves to five minutes initially. And then we can go back and forth and banter after that. And I've taken two and a half, so I'll yield.
Anything?
Um, yeah, I just, I agree with Councilmember Willis. This is, this is the time we get to speak to each other. And, you know, we all have different ideas or different ways of looking at things. Um, I agree that meetings run too long. Um, sometimes maybe we need to consider if there's a lot on the agenda of having two meetings in a month. You know, uh, I just think that, you know, there's important things that come up that needed to be discussed. Um, again, I agree that the meetings are too long, but, um, this is the only chance we have to talk to each other. So, you know, if we start out with a five-minute, uh, time, and, but then you could come back to, you know, listen to everybody, then come back. So it would be a real discussion thing. So that's what, my thoughts.
I agree with that, but when we come back to discuss what maybe you said or another council member has said to discuss it, I think it should be another like five or 10, we shouldn't be able to do that for hours. You know, it, it needs to be precise and limited. Our, our meetings need to be shorter. And we cannot go over and repeat, constantly repeat the same thing. So, um, yeah, so I'm open to suggestions on how to shorten the meetings. I'm not saying, no, you cannot ask questions. I'm definitely, things come up during meetings that we need to discuss. I'm just saying, we need to be aware of the public and the staff. And personally, it's hard on me sitting here six hours. You know, I don't know how everybody else feels, but it's hard, you know. So I think we need to have some consideration and not speak forever. Make our point and then go from there.
Thank you. Uh, my comments are, I don't like, uh, long meetings. Uh, we, we've had, um, I think we've had two at the six-hour point in my seven years. Could be wrong by one or two, but it depends on how you're measuring the meeting. A lot of times it'd be a CRE, like today, we've been here since five o'clock. But it was two separate meetings. We've been a little over two hours for the regular meeting. But agreed, just the duration and the science I read is your, our brains and you, and, and four and fi, hours, four, five, six, after a full day, after everyone. Our city staff, I certainly have sympathy for, for them. It's worse than, I mean, I've actually got, I live here and go home and they've been here all day. So I know they're exhausted. They're ready to go to their homes. Not to mention the next day, they're back here on a Wednesday, middle of the week. And that, 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 that can be tough. I don't want to continue to do those. I don't think anyone's trying. Um, as far as perception on preparedness, I don't know if, if you're just sharing public perception, but if anyone up here doesn't think, you know, we're prepared. I've, I've tried to state when I was not prepared and usually ask for more time. But, um, from what I can see is, uh, we are prepared. Um, and I think that it, there is some good in, in verbally stating, hey, everyone go through the first comments. Let's make sure that prioritize giving everyone a chance to speak in, in a short period of time. But knowing, just like Councilmember Davis, you explaining this agenda item took you longer than 10 minutes, I think. But I, I don't, I think the pressure to try to get it done concise is a good thing. But I also don't want to limit and, and, and let that get in the way of, what needs to be said. And sometimes, uh, it's really hard. And I've, my pers, I'll speak for myself. I've done that process, Councilmember Davis. I've asked those questions to city staff. I've worked through issues and there's been in the recent, some times where I, I did not have another place to go. I know what it's like to, to deal with a lot of information in short period. Because that's really what, one of the things you're talking about is when you don't let staff know ahead of time something and you bring that up, right? Ambush, I think, is the word you used.
I, I'm saying my personal feelings.
Well, I've heard that around here. So I, I think that if, for, for anyone listening on a feeling of ambush, I know that feeling. I've been ambushed. We all walked into the, the, the last city meeting with less than 24 hours notice, a full report. I didn't feel prepared in that meeting. And how could any of us have been prepared? And, and am I upset about that? No. I believe our city manager worked as hard as he could. He got it done when he did. But we rolled with it and we did it. And we, and, and that's okay. But I was standing this weekend on Fillmore Avenue in Orange. A gentleman was sitting outside. He opened his front door. And while I wouldn't say on the record, the swearing that I heard, but he didn't have nice things to say to me. And he said, "I am wet." And he had water coming through his tile floor on Orange Avenue and Fillmore. Or in Johnson, excuse me. Orange and Johnson. And when we look at these lengthier meetings, I'm not looking at how fast we can get done. I'm looking at how we can fix these issues. And I take my story and process on every issue. What did I do? What were the steps that were taken? And it's, there are times where I've brought things up, two reasons. I don't have a lot, things come up, especially the day of the meeting, very fast. And we don't have the time to sit down with the city manager. And so that's one reason it doesn't come up. The other reason is it's, it's regarding issues with our city staff that I want to overcome. And that's not a pro, that, we are the only body that can fix that. And I would challenge anyone to say, find something that I brought up that I was not trying to work through prior. And I would agree with you. We always try to do that. And I've spoke to our city manager about this. But we've got some, we do got a lengthy meeting issue. But we got bigger issues with people having water come into their house and a whole lot of other issues on public safety around the January 24th special meeting. And I know that's going to take time. But if you look at Cape Canaveral and compare it to other cities, one meeting for three, four, five, six hours is no different than two meetings for, you know, two, three, four, or two, one, two, three hours. And most cities that, that I've seen, they meet twice a month. So total time in a month, we've talked about this in the past. They're putting in just as much time. What I like about that is they don't get to those, you know, four and five-hour points because they break it up. And I like some of the idea, I think we should talk about ways, whether it be workshops. We've talked about, you know, putting a lot of the presentations and the things all together, the proclamations, the exciting stuff. That does, that's a more positive meeting that we celebrate our community. And then, hey, we're gonna get, it's the business of the city, but we know that this stuff is going to take a different, uh, train of thought. And so I'm not for putting, uh, time limits on, on any of us. But I do like the idea of just verbally trying to stay under, if it's five minutes, as a verbal goal to say, hey, fir, let, let's try to let everyone talk once. And that's where, that's where it is with me. I don't, I'm not, I, I'm, I'm prepared. I learn new stuff every day. We're all prepared. I'm not, I don't think we need to defend that to the public if that's what we're hearing. And when you really dig in and you look at all the steps that I've taken, I think I will sit down with any citizen and go, what would you do if you were in my circumstance? And I don't, I'm, I do not know of anyone that I've talked to that would not have agreed to spend the time we need on some of these serious issues. But in the gaps of the serious ones, yes. I, I am, I am in agreement. We can always improve and try to get better. I remember passing this resolution. And I think that, right now, we've got, we've got a lot of challenging issues in, in front of us. And we've just got it down to just a couple in a specific area that I really, I think we're going to need more time on these issues. And though we have a process for adding things on to the agenda, um, I think our, our code, uh, governs that and, and I think we follow it. Um, I know what it's like, final thing is, I know what it's like to walk into a meeting and have an add-on agenda item. That happened in the former city manager separation agreement.
I didn't hear.
Which was really, really.
I'm sorry. I don't mean to interrupt you, but I didn't hear the first part. You were saying there is no problem. What did you say about add-ons? I didn't hear you.
Um, add-on agenda items.
Yeah.
Uh, I said, we have a procedure to follow for add-on agenda items, I think in our code. We've also, and, and I think the cases where that happened, it's happened a couple of different ways. One, it was getting consensus early to, to move forward with it. Uh, the other one was during reports, which is something I've been advised by our city attorney to say. The other one was during reports, which is something I've been advised by our city attorney to say, hey, during reports, you can bring stuff up. Those things aren't intentional. And the last thing I'll say, well, the city manager, I walked into a meeting with an add-on agenda item that was so, it was extremely stressful. It did not make any sense. And to this day, I still look at that as exactly what we don't need. And those are good examples of add-on agenda items that we, but we took action. And so a lot of these things for add-ons, we're actually not even taking action. If you add it on and you take action, yeah, I think that the public, I've been a big champion for public access and information. And the, the time limits. If it's really about time, I meet with a one-on-one with our city manager. All of us do. You're saying that's the time to get your questions answered. And anytime before the meeting, you can circle back and schedule a meeting. If he meets with us each for two hours, that's 10 total hours. Why don't we just have that meeting one time with our city manager here on the reserved dates that we already have in the schedule? He doesn't got to say it five different times. He gets all of his time back. He does it right here on the public, in front of everyone. And he goes, here's the agenda, guys, no action today. We go right through the agenda. And we go, great. Follow up with any one-on-one questions if you choose, but we're done, we're prepped. The community's prepped. I've thought about that as an idea, to say, wow, that took Todd's time in that scenario of 10 hours, down to two, eight hours. He got a whole day back. And so there's many, there's many ways we can fix this. And I think, I don't want another longer meeting, but I think these issues are valid. And until they get fixed, I mean, when they get fixed, I think, I think meetings will get shorter. But it is one meeting a month. I agree they go too long. I don't know what else to do. We meet 12 times a year, usually a minimum. And these issues have been going on for years. That started, and unfortunately, we weren't able to resolve them. And it's, it's at the council level. So this has been brought up a lot, this issue right here. It was a resolution. It was brought up several times by former council member. And I've never been a fan of limiting the time of duly-elected officials, public. If we're going to do anything with public comment, I would be in favor of increasing it under certain circumstances. So.
I wasn't talking public comment. But as far as deviation from a set agenda, unless council formally approves a critical unscheduled add-on item, there should be no deviation from the agenda. There are items, there are times that items have been added on that we did not approve. We did not take a vote. We don't have, we didn't have consensus and they were added on. So that's something I think we need to discuss. As far as the meetings with the city manager, I mean, I discuss things with the city manager about different items or whatever, how I personally feel. There may be, I may not want to do that in front of you. I like my one-on-one that's in private. I can ask him different questions that I feel is necessary. So I'm against having a whole, everybody present at the same time. And as far as, you know, I mean, we signed this, we agreed to this, and we have to follow this. I'm, I think that if items are going on too long, then we should agree that we are going to make a motion to move it forward to the next meet, at the next meeting. And that way, we can get the questions that we obviously have and are continuing to ask answered. And that way, we can come with our questions answered and ready to speak about it at the next meeting. So.
Is there any action that you want to make a motion on or propose?
I just want everybody to be aware and refresh everybody that this is what we've signed and this is what we need to agree to. And we need to find a way to have our meeting shorter.
Thank you. Councilmember Jackson or anyone?
I have one more question, as someone new. On the last page of the resolution, Exhibit A, Page 5, under application. Things like this, I'm so much of a detail-oriented person, this drives me insane. Although new ideas can emerge in time, formal decisions are final and further debate is unproductive, which, that's fine. The concept equally applies to the volunteer advisory boards. Counsel has the option to accept, modify, or reject board recommendations. However, and from what my understanding is, those boards serve at the pleasure of counsel. And so it has however, councils should trust that the boards have done their due diligence and accept their efforts.
Where is this?
The last page of that.
Item 11 of Subs.
Yeah. Now, all of that I'm good with. I'm good with the, you should trust that they've done their due diligence. But is it not council's responsibility, since they serve at our pleasure, that you always question the, we should always ensure that the efforts are aligned with what we want as a council, not just accept someone's effort because they've done their due diligence? We should, just like we've seen tonight with defining the process with board appointments. You know, we have a responsibility to our citizens to ensure that the things that are under us as far as, you know, serving at our pleasure are being done the way that the council feels is correct. So things like that wording trips me up. I appreciate going through this, Kim. It's good, it's good to learn what's in here. But I also come from the world where we're fixing things that are broken a lot of times in our, in our world in business. And so where we want to cut back on the amount of time, I'm almost in agreement with Mickey that it's time, if that's the case, then it's time to break this up into two meetings a month so that we have the opportunity to discuss what's needed without having to simply go by something that is on paper when there's so much to do. We have a responsibility to our citizens. Thank you.
It would give a shorter meeting, but you just have two. And that's what I'm saying, take it easy on ourselves. I'm not excusing six-hour meetings. That's bad. That, we, four is about where I think we start. And that was, I think, the intent, right? It was not, it was six, well, I don't, yeah, I think six to 10 is what we strive for. So today, just by the idea of putting a CRA meeting before, sort of breaks our, we're compromising these discussion items. And also, we usually put very emotional things that we care about, such as this, and that we're always at the end of the agenda. And so.
My only concern about two meetings a month is that we'll go back to six hours for each meeting. You know, if we can't, we can't follow the resolution, it's not going to do us any good to have a second meeting because we're going to go right to six hours. If we can guarantee we have two meetings a month and it goes four hours, that's fine. But we can't guarantee that. It's going to, just because we have two meetings, they're still going to both go six hours each time. So I think we just have to conduct ourselves properly.
City attorney, is there, this resolution, what, we, I guess police ourselves on this one? But when, because we created the resolution, if there was any issue or quote-unquote violation of the resolution, is that something that's, is it binding?
I think it's intended to be guidance, right? For the city council to follow?
Okay.
I mean, I think that's about all it is.
It's not this, you know, if you didn't follow it, like our code, like Code of Conduct, I think that was codified or.
It does say in here, if you look at it, and holding each other accountable for time management practices and in many cases applying the already-established Roberts rules. Code of Conduct will greatly reduce. So yes, it doesn't, it does has Code of Conduct in here.
Thank you. Okay, what do we want to do? Anything else?
I'm fine with, I just want everybody to be aware of it, be conscious of it so that we can hopefully not have these long meetings.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
I would just like to say, I like the idea of us all meeting with Todd at the same time to discuss the agenda. And I think, like Councilman Davis said, you know, she has things she wants to talk to him about. Well, maybe your questions are the same as my questions. And we could get them all answered at one time. And that would, when it came time to go to the meeting, it would speed things up. And if you privately wanted to talk to him about something, then you could also meet with him privately.
Can we ask Todd how he feels about that?
It'd be a sunshine law, publicly advertised meeting. Just call it agenda preparation meeting, no, no action.
I know that other cities have done similar things like that. And it can be used to good effect. But I think Councilmember Davis has another good point, that there are times that that format would not allow somebody to perhaps share everything that they're thinking. It may, it may put possibly a little chilling effect on certain ideas they might want to discuss. Maybe they're embarrassed to bring up this idea publicly, for example. You know, maybe they might feel stupid if they ask this question, kind of a thing. And that's part of the nice thing about the way we have it now, is anybody, we can talk about anything. We all do that. We share stories, we move on, we go down rabbit holes, we ask dumb questions of each other. And I think you just would lose some of that freedom during those meetings. Just for the record, Lisa, you typically set up one-hour meetings for the one-on-ones, is that correct?
Yes, one, it's one hour.
So there's five hours a month, not eight?
You and I.
You and I typically go longer.
It is, we have longer prep meetings too. So that's, you know, it just, they tend to go, I think, you're over an hour from time to time? Are you always?
No, I'm over an hour.
Over an hour?
I'm usually over an hour.
And we've had 30-minute meetings.
Except Kim's behind me, so I always have to.
I'm knocking on the door.
Yeah, I have to rush because she's wanting in, so. So mine's kind of short.
Well, that was with the financial guy. When we were going over.
No, it was with him.
Oh, I don't knock on the door. I knocked on the door with the audit.
Yeah, you followed it several meetings and I had to rush.
Could still, you'd still have an outlet to ask those.
Yeah.
And I think if we're learning together and this feeling of, you know, Mayor Protim Kellum fully got it and understood it in their prep. But maybe I didn't get it, right? But there is, I think.
And my stupid question could be the same as your stupid question.
That next, yes. That next meeting though, I mean, we really do hit the ground running if we're prepped. And I think you still could have, you know, a one-on-one for technical or things that maybe you didn't know. But it would be on an as-needed basis. I mean, I don't think an individual council member, whether it be meeting prep or any issue in the city, we always can meet one-on-one. And I think I'd be interested to learn what other cities were doing it. Todd, I think you had mentioned, do you know anyone in Bervard County?
I can bring it up to the city managers group and see if that's effective and how they feel about it.
Another consideration is everybody's schedule. You know, Lisa goes, and she appoints our meetings by when I work, when you work, when you're available. And everybody has a certain timeframe that works for them. So to get everybody at once and then to take time to have to go back to Todd on one-on-one because I didn't feel comfortable asking this question or for whatever reason, that's another time away that Lisa's got a schedule, my schedule, whatever. I don't agree with everybody all at once.
I like that.
But we've discussed enough, we can move forward.
Yeah, let's do that. This resolution, I appreciate, I was actually looking for this and I actually forgot. I thought it was like a separate, it was a resolution in a regular meeting in a packet. So I do think we should go through it again and make any, you know, changes or emphasis on anything that we need. Any other discussion? Okay. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on to the next agenda item. I'm sorry. Public comment? I thought this was the one from earlier.
It was, it's on the same one.
Come on forward. I'm very sorry. And I'll check since we're, council, we're okay with Mr. Campbell? If anybody online who's listening wants to, please raise your hand. Mr. Campbell's going to come forward with public comment. We will open it up to you as well, just to be sure. Mr. Campbell?
So I guess first thing, if you ask me that card, do you see anyone talk about it?
One card for each item you talked about.
So, I didn't write it down as you were speaking. Because many of the things that you talked about, I have written it down. The Roberts Rules of Order discussion. It's really compelling, but it does bring a question to my mind. Want to be the police for rules. What I want to talk about is the one-on-ones. I'm interested in your decision. I'm much more interested in how you got there. I want to hear the discussion. I want to know what led you to believe that. How you came to that conclusion.
About legalities of it, because of something that happened in these one-on-ones. I would must refer, you don't have one-on-ones, that any discussion that you're going to have that will lead you to a decision is done in the sunshine. And if that means you all get together and have a second meeting, I even wrote down workshop. Could you have a workshop that prepares for the agenda? Okay, which is what you should be doing. I don't, I don't want this to devolve to the point that the meeting time is more important than the discussion because it is not. The discussion is the most important thing. Equally important to the discussion is doing it in front of your citizens. I want to know how you got there. I want to know what was in your head when you made that decision. I want to hear that dialogue. I want to see the process working. My opinion, this is just my opinion, things like one-on-one certainly create the perception that Puna Gordon's dealing with right now, that those meetings are intended to influence council decisions before you come in front of the citizens. It eliminates any possibility that me, a citizen, can find out what was discussed on those one-on-ones when in fact, if you're discussing city business, I want to be able to see it. I want to be able to recover it. And I spend a lot of time looking at those kinds of things because it's important to me and it's important to our city. So don't let this devolve into reducing discussion to make a timeframe. The timeframe is not the issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And sorry again about that. I do see you did mark number seven here. And I think if there's anybody else that'd like to speak, please raise your hand or come forward. Seeing none online. I do not see any hands raised. We'll go ahead and bring it back to the council. Closed public comment for that discussion item. Councilmember Davis, I believe, wanted a refresher and proposed some ideas. I think we got through that. Good to go, we can move on? All right, so number eight here. Discuss possible changes to permitting due to hardship on condos during insuring process. Recoding investigations, scarification submitted by Councilmember Jackson. The floor is yours.
Thank you.
Thank you. In a prior meeting, we had discussed roof recoding and the new surge report requirements for condominiums, as well as the fact that condominiums are getting hit very hard on insurance. And it is not required by the state for roofs that have been recoded to get permitted. Insurance companies are using that as an excuse to say they've done nothing to their roof when they may have a warranty. So this is a follow-up to that discussion. I met with Mr. Dickey, as well as our city attorney and Mr. Palmer. We have multiple people from that department on, and we all discussed the ability to potentially do an administrative type of code where we would require a permit on a coated roof. Oftentimes, the coated roofs are flat roofs, and I was to get information from that call, follow up and get information from the insurance companies. So the one that I was able to get through to was Citizens. And so insurance companies can now offer, this is an update on what's going on with the roof recoding and roof warranties. Insurance companies can now offer policies that pay out the actual cash value for the roofs over 10 years old, rather than the cost of a full replacement. And that minimizes the amount of insurance that may, insurance cost for condos and homeowners. Homeowners can also opt for a policy with a stated value limit for roof coverage, and insurers may use a roof surface reimbursement schedule for roofs over 10 years old. So it says to make sure and consult with your insurance company. With Citizens, it has updated its roof rules to comply with legislative changes enacted by Senate Bill 2D. And the key points on these are determining the remaining useful life, risks that don't meet roof replacement eligibility requirements may still be eligible for coverage if they have five years of remaining useful life. The previous amount for that was three years. So if a condo complex has five remaining years of life and a 10-year warranty, because these vendors will sell a warranty longer than the remaining use on the life, they still at least could end up with five years to fund their reserves for that roof. So that can help them. It gives them a little bit, buys them a little bit of extra time. Age consideration, when only part of a roof is replaced, the roof age determined on the oldest section, the coverage extensions for qualifying risks, the coverage can be extended for up to five years, even if the inspection shows greater remaining useful life. And then they have a condition rule related to excessively patched areas, which has been revised at the state level. So there are changes that are going on in regards to roofing. And with Citizens' current insurance roof policies regarding recoding, it says, "An underwriter may extend the remaining useful life to one to three years on buildings with coating updates." So if a condo complex got a roof recoded, that would give them three years to fund that reserve, which could be helpful, especially with all the surge requirements going on. And it says, "Note, maintenance roof coatings such as acrylic, silicone, urethane, soy, elastomeric, or other similar coatings that are typically applied to an existing roof covering for waterproofing or UV protection do not meet Citizens' requirements for proof of roof covering material replacement." And it gives some information on that as far as what's defined, and gives sources. So the initial agenda item, when we had done this in the prior meeting, was, do we want to, as a council, be able to require a roof permit in our city to prove that the condo complex has done something to their roofs that could possibly buy them some time on insurance coverage? When Mr. Dickey and everyone met with me, they didn't indicate, and he may want to speak to us on this, they didn't indicate a great, a number of these that might occur, but we don't want to impact staff, of course. But it could definitely help with our citizens that are in condo complexes and the surge reports and the milestone inspections, if they have a way to prove that they have provided something, some kind of coating on their roof. So I wanted to bring it to you all, let you know what we found out. Mr. Dickey, would you like to address it? Or did I, did I give enough?
Yeah. You did a great job.
Did I give enough information?
Yeah, I mean, it's really just a policy decision by the city council. The question we came out of our meeting with Kay was, is there a, what's the cost-benefit here? I mean, is there a benefit to the property owners to go through this added step of getting a permit? And that was when Kay went and talked to the insurance companies to see what allowances they would make for that, for that roof coating or roof covering, excuse me. So, you know, from a staffing perspective, as Kay indicated, there's very few of these that happen every year, relatively speaking. And so I think from a staff perspective, we could, we could certainly accommodate a new permit process for that. These products all come out with specs, installation specs from the manufacturer, so we would just be, we would be inspecting that the installation was consistent with these manufactured specs. Now, we may or may not have the expertise on staff to inspect these installation requirements. If not, a simple solution would be just to get a third-party provider to come in and certify the installation. So there's workarounds, and there's ways we can deal with things. But, but that would really be the only issue from a staffing perspective, is do we have the expertise to determine whether the rolled on, excuse me, the roof coatings are properly installed? But if that's the council's wish, we'd be happy to do that. I think it would be a nominal inspection fee. And, yeah.
I have a question.
You.
Dave, is that something that the city engineer, I mean, Kim Lee and Horn is our engineer, would they have someone on staff that would be able to?
Yeah, I mean, I think it would take some special equipment, because there's a, there's a thickness requirement that's, 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 that comes along with the installation process for these, for these materials. So, yeah, I would assume that the city engineer would be able to assist with that. I haven't specifically asked them that question, so, so we'd need to, we'd need to dig into that. But, but, but there is, I'm sure there's equipment that would need to be purchased, and whether they have that or not, I don't know. But, yeah.
Thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Willis.
At the last council meeting, weren't we going to be querying the Florida Building Code on this?
We did, and it's not part of the building code for recoding.
Okay.
And scarification is, they'll give you a permit, I mean, they'll give you insurance if you do that because you're removing the part, the portion of the roof. And just in regards to your comment about inspection, Citizen, Citizens said that the roof condition would be validated with a roof inspection performed by a licensed roofer or general contractor. So that might be part of the process that we might want to look at adopting potentially, including required photographs of the entire roof and surface line.
Yeah, Anthony might be better prepared to respond, but there are, there are important differences between roof coatings and roof coverings, and within the Florida Building Code. So one requires a permit and one doesn't, currently.
And this is to give a path for the roof coating, at least. Is that?
That's correct.
And, and so, yeah, because it's like a liquid silicone, the EPDM, the white, it's like roll-in paint, the thick, and it will give the insurance company comfort? Is that the?
Well, it will give the insurance company, who have now, due to the legislation at the state level, is required to extend the, the consideration of the roof having been recoded from three years to five years. So that gives our associations more time to fund their roof reserves, and not be in such a pinch to fund their surge report immediately if they wanted to handle a temporary fix in order to help their, their reserves. So, and it says, "For roof repair, whether re-roof, complete full roof recovering, removal and replacement, or one-time recovering," there's existing information you can get. And of course, they talk about going to underwriting, but they literally just went in and added the recoding into that legislation, which is, as I said, Senate Bill D2 on recoded roofs. So they're trying to address it, but what we've been seeing in our area is insurance companies saying, oh, well, we don't count that. And there's no permit. So if we get ahead of the process and provide them, if it's not a burden to Mr. Dickey's group, then that may help some of our residents in the area. But...
Well, if it's condos, that's, I'll be over 50% of the residents live. I mean, when you add them up, it's, that's a number, but it's, it's high. I think if our city attorney wants to look at this in between now, and I don't know if there's like a crunch time or if there's issue, but if he comes back with something, if it could work, or some pathway to make it easier to get the roof coating approved, certified, warranted, you know, it just, I think, brings an official document that this was inspected by a, or permitted.
Right.
What others, did any other cities maybe? I'll stop. I think, I don't want to lose the, the goal that you would hope, but to make the permitting process easier, I think David says we can look at that, and, I mean, David?
Yeah, I mean, the issue for councils, whether or not the city wants to impose a permit, building permit requirement for roof coating. Under the Florida Building Code, the current Florida Building Code, roof coverings require a permit. Roof coatings, on the other hand, do not require a permit. So I think what the councilwoman is, is saying that perhaps in some circumstances, which are totally outside of the city's control, the underwriter for an insurance company might extend the life of the, of a roof for insurance purposes, if you have a roof coating, and that, and that makes, you know, make the, make the property insurable. That is totally outside the city's control. But the issuance of a city permit may, and it's may, have some benefit of demonstrating that, you know, the roof coating was, was permitted and done, but I'm assuming, too, that underwriting's still going to require, probably an possible inspection, they're gonna maybe want to see the contract, and, you know, the contracting information that's a condominium complex, you know, entered into to examine what exactly was done on, on the roof. But the permit may require, may be, a city permit may be of some assistance. Now, I've looked at it, and that would be an administrative amendment to the city's code, and in my opinion, be construed as an administrative amendment that's permissible under the Florida Building Code, without having to go through the local amendment process, which is pretty involved. Because you're not, the city would not be establishing any different technical requirements. It's just a process, a procedure, permit requirement, which would be an administrative amendment to the city's administrative provisions in the city's code. So the issue for the council is, do you, would you, would you want to go down that route of doing an ordinance to require a building permit for roof coatings? That's, that's the only issue, really, that, that the council has any control over regarding this underwriting mess that everybody in Florida is involved in.
Do we want to require a condo?
A building permit, yeah.
A permit for roof coatings?
Roof coatings.
Coverings, because coverings, it sounds like, already required.
They're already required.
And that decision the council makes, compared to the, do we, the administrative section, or I guess, does this council need to do any action? Or are you saying those administrative powers are there, this would qualify, and he would be able to proceed with consensus today?
Well, with an ordinance change.
It still would require.
Right. We would add a provision in the administrative section of the city's building code.
Oh, I got it.
That states that a permit would be required. Now, of course, the consequences of that are, property owners are going to need to understand that a building permit is now required when it's, it's not technically today. And then they would have to apply for the permit, then the building official would have to review it, issue it, and then do an inspection, of course, right? Just like they would for any other building permit.
And so truly, it's, I wanted to bring it to council. I was hoping to save condo complexes in our area money on having to come out for huge amounts, because some of them are coming out $30,000 to $50,000 assessments. And so that's what the thought process was. However, we, as a council, have to consider, too, if that becomes a negative with having another permit and having to go through the inspection process and that sort of thing. But it would give people teeth to give to their insurance company if they took that. We're not assured that they would. We couldn't guarantee that they are. But it does move along in the same direction as the state bill that's being worked on.
Just taking the coatings out of it, and the roof, should a roof on any building be inspected after roof coating? I think it's a good thing. And so just at a minimum. I get it, though.
I have a question. A lot of, there's a lot of mobile homes in our city, that, that's how they do their roofs with coating. Would they, if we did this, would they also need, is it any coating on any roof, or just condos, or?
I don't know the answer to that technical question, whether we can...
When I checked with the insurance company, I was checking with condos, but they were talking all roofs, any flat roof that needed recoding. And they're basically using it as a way to not renew insurance, to triple the rates or whatever on any type of dwelling. So that's the information I was given when I spoke to citizens.
If we had the permit process, it would probably help people that had...
They can at least prove that, prove that they've done it.
And it was inspected.
Yes. I had someone with Space Coast Condominium Association that did it, and their insurance company said, oh, we don't recognize that. We, you haven't touched a roof since 2004, whatever it was, when they had had roof work done, because it wasn't a permitted process.
I think it's worth looking at. It sounds like the soonest we could do it would be a couple of meetings, especially if it's an ordinance change. Counsel, any other comments on this, to want to look at it? We're not approving anything, but guess directing.
I certainly think it's worth looking at. I know with our condominium complex, the insurance company required the scarification. uh, in order to insure, um, so I think it might be a, a variable with the insurance companies, so it may help, it certainly can't hurt unless someone just can't afford to pay for the permit and the inspection, so, but it's going to be applied to every roof, uh, mobile homes, what, whatever, any flat roof, so we've got to consider everybody there.
I might add, Mayor, um, from my time as building official, mobile homes and trailers typically regulated by the Department of Highway and Safety Motor Vehicles and are exempted from the Florida Building Code, um, the only thing that would change is if you're like adding an addition, like a porch or screen room onto the side of a, that's attached to, you know, the ground, that's, that would fall into the Florida Building Code, but generally, the things that you do to a mobile home do not fall into the Florida Building Code because they're superseded by the Department of Highway and Safety Motor Vehicles.
Very helpful, thank you. Councilmember Davis, or will anybody else? Councilmember Jackson, did you get what you accomplished out of this?
Yes, thank you.
Or hope for, excuse me, uh, city's attorney or manager, I think you, you need anything?
So, you just want us to look into this more and, uh, possibly propose an ordinance?
Okay. Yes, if it can, if it can help, um, I think.
It, just to be clear, Mayor, is, is there consensus to, uh, draft an ordinance for a city council?
For roof coating?
Permitting.
Yes, I think that's exactly, today, there's nothing for coat, coatings, we are looking at adding that.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, great, well, I think we are now on to the item number, uh, excuse me, nine here, uh, attendance, uh, of the State of Florida's Training for Emergency Management Symposium Leading From the Trenches, Councilmember Jackson?
Yes, I am scheduled for Florida Department of Emergency Management's Symposium for Elected Officials, it is in St. Augustine, Florida, between, uh, June 10th and the 14th, and I've signed up for multiple workshops, I wanted to discuss whether council wanted me to bring back the information that I've received and present it to you all, um, I had discussed this with Todd, and he said that may need to be a closed meeting, um, along with some of our, our deputies and that type of thing, a security type of meeting, um, so I've gotten into several, um, of the workshops and several of the topics in there, they are putting this on throughout the state for different cities, and so I am going in, I wanted to see if y'all were interested in having a meeting and covering my hotel, if not, I'm going anyway, so I'm just like, I'm going anyway, but, um, just wanted to let you all know.
I, oh, Councilmember Willis, please.
Uh, do you happen to have an agenda of what's going to be covered?
There's, there's, I can give it to you, um, there's different workshops, on several of them, I'm on hu, I'm on a waitlist, uh, so, for example, one of them is, these are scary topics, um, I'm on a waitlist for what, what to expect when the world ascends, I do have cybersecurity and risk management for emergencies, substantial damage assessments and post-disaster training, um, what to expect when the world ascends, once again, I'm, I'm on a waitlist for that, um, disaster toolkit, um, developing local residential mitigation program, uh, so there's several, there's four days of workshops with this symposium that the State of Florida is doing for different groups, now, they've also had, they had a, a session in Vieira, I was scheduled for that, but they ended up being completely booked, and it was more for our first responders, and then they've had one in Tallahassee for them as well, this one is statewide through the Florida League of Cities, it was one of their offerings, um, when they had a webinar, and I, I found this interesting because I've done disaster planning in the public utility realm, so, yes.
Well, I, I just wonder if that might be something we need to send Zach, since he is in charge of our emergency response.
I think it'd be great for him to.
I, I don't know if, don't know offhand if he's had any kind of training like that formally, or?
And I'm not sure he'll be able to get in at this point, and this one was for elected officials.
Oh, okay, well, but I mean, that's.
But what we might do, I think is very valid, what you're saying, Councilman Willis, is get him with the coordinator, because we want to make sure he's in whatever sessions he needs to be in.
Yeah, well, I, if they're doing it around the state, I, I just wonder if there's going to be other opportunities that, uh, uh, we can get him in, or?
I think that's a good idea, personally.
Okay, any other comments on this one? I think it's great.
Yeah.
That, and thank you, and Jim, and thanks to Mayor Tim Callum, I mean, she was one of the ones who brought forward just a reimbursement policy of some sort and city staff, and me and everyone worked hard and got it around, and I've used it, it's worked, um, really well, and I think it's, I think we budget, you know, every year, Todd was kind of running through just rough, and we're about to get into it, but there's, as long as there's room in there, and I think our city manager and city clerk can let us know, the way I look at it is kind of like, you know, I don't always go to the League of Cities event, the big convention, but it's budgeted if I choose, you know, those, those funds to go to something else is awesome.
Right, and, and for you to go and report back to the council on what you learned and how, you know, maybe things we can do.
And I absolutely think that, um, any kind of disaster planning right now is a good thing in the world that we live in, um, and, you know, we're so fortunate and blessed because we're nestled between the bases here, so we're pretty safe and sound, really, we have a lot of great, um, military folks watching out for us, but I think that it, it is only to our benefit as long as we keep ourselves in a situation where we're trained and ready to go in case of anything, uh, one thing that I believe the city manager had asked, and I think this is a great question as well, is, has Brevard County done any of these, because there have been a lot of other counties that have, Orange County has, that I'm aware of, and that kind of thing, so I think the more that we can learn in our world today, the better we are, and I think that, uh, Councilmember Willis's idea of making sure that Zach is in the correct ones as well for emergency management, that's great.
Yeah, or whoever's appropriate, in my experience, attending Lagoon events, and, um, Zach, Lexi, I think, I don't know if a city man, but anytime we have a, a city staff member there who's, that's their day-to-day focus or a part, it, it's just so much better for, for us, for the city as a whole, and I think it really comes down to Todd's priorities and whether or not you think, I think there's times where it makes sense to you, but ultimately, he, he can decide, and I think you have, and it's worked out, do you need consensus of some sort?
I just want to repeat what I hear as consensus is that the council has agreed, um, we're happy to fund the hotel and the per diems, because it's, it's in the budget to do, to attend, for Councilmember Jackson to attend this, what I'm not clear on is the security training, what's the consensus on that?
No, I was just reading off some of the things that I'm signed up, there's literally an entire workshop, uh, with different topics, and boy, you have to get into them, and a lot of them have waitlists, so I've got the ones that I've gotten into and ones I've gotten waitlisted, I'm going to be calling the State of Florida on a couple that have high demand to see if they can give a second workshop topic for, or time for that.
I, I was referring to security training for council and staff.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, city manager.
I'm not sure what the consensus is there.
See, it is, it is getting late, Kim, see what happens, um, so, uh, that was for me to come back and present my, what I've, the materials I've gotten and what I've learned to council, so that we are prepared and in line with what's going on with this state initiative.
Mayor?
Yes?
Maybe, um, is, would it, it wouldn't really be training, you'd be reporting back to council.
Yes, thank you.
All right.
So consensus is to report back to council in a format to be determined?
Yes, that would be good.
Because just from, uh, the whole public transparency, that is really nice to say, hey, went to this event, and I'm going to bring it back to the community, here's what I learned, when appropriate, and, and if helpful, so.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, that was it.
And thank you for bringing that forward, I think it's, uh, well, Councilmember Willis brought one, I think it was Lagoon or something, but these, these, there's a lot we could invite it to, and, you know, dividing and conquering i- is really helpful when we bring it back, so, thank you, thank you, anything else, counsel, on this one? Councilmember Jackson, you're good?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, so, that was item number nine, item number 11 was moved up, I guess, to be the new 10, or we'll just take item number 11, next, um, Councilmember Jackson, I know you, you had, I have some questions, but I think you wanted to pull two, and you wanted to get an update, or I can't recall what you said, but.
Yes, there were two things I'm still curious about on this, number one is the rebar that was sticking up and Florida Power and Light, if they've removed it, and this is on the Fillmore Avenue, and then the other thing was the flooding from, um, from the pavement that was paved over, the impervious pavement that was paved over near, uh, near the Jackson Street location, I know that we got an update from Mr. Dickey, and, um, I know a notice of violation went out, and there were not really any requirements in regards to what was done, but since imperv, since we paved over the, the impervious pavement, or he did, there's flooding issues now that evidently weren't there before, is that correct, city manager?
That's, that's how I understand the, um, the code enforcement complaint, um, and Dave can correct me if I'm wrong on this, but I believe the memo that went out today said that, that will be investigated, and applicable sections of city code will be enforced through the Code Enforcement Department related to stormwater runoff.
Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure I understood, because I, I wanted to make sure we have some form of action, um, in regards to this being paved over and causing flooding now, because if there, if the problem wasn't there before, I didn't want whatever's written on paper to create a situation where it just continues on because we don't have it defined.
It kind of evolved into, um, hey, you need to get with St. John's on this, and they got with St. John's, and St. John's says, you don't need a permit for us, you just have to follow whatever local codes you've got, so we're, we're left with what local codes do we have that we can apply to this, and that's going to be the subject of the, the next phase of that code enforcement investigation.
Okay.
And as far as the rebar goes, Dave, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe FPL said that that was not their responsibility, um, and they'd noted that it was there prior, also, um, city staff did go out and put cones out there, um, maybe some caution tape, am I correct about that too, uh, just to kind of make some visibility there?
Okay, oh, boy, that makes it fun, because that's usually what's put in to stabilize a telephone pole, so I'm fairly shocked that that's not FPL's, um, have we notified the homeowner that FPL is saying that it, okay, so?
This was the topic, was this in the update, the spreadsheet update that went out?
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, that's what I had.
Thank you. Anyone else, uh, this time on this item, I do have some, Councilmember Willis, Davis, Mayor Tim? Um, as it relates to this item, I think, I, I would like to go at the next, first is, my hope was to, to discuss this, and I, I went back and listened, I'm like, did I say, was I not clear, should I have said it, and I think it's said a couple times, but just the discussion whether, you know, it was understood that way or not, is, is really important, and at least having like that, that update sent out, but going through, and I think we have, um, we have what was provided, but what it does is it, it really delays us, because this is, you get an information-only item, we've learned, learned and know that we can't discuss that, that's not what those are for, and so, when can we discuss it? Well, the appropriate method is to put it on the agenda, and so then we're, we're two months out, and so it, to me, is put it on and discuss it so we can get this resolved and get it put behind us and fix these issues, um, I'm not happy with a lot of the progress that's been made and things that I'm learning and seeing, um, I really want to see this continue, uh, to move forward as expeditiously as possible, but there's still questions out there that are not being answered, and one of the things that was really important in the last meeting, first, I just want to make a point, the statement was made to, to add on, informational items should not be added on, the request, I believe, that, that I made was that this should have been on as a discussion item from the beginning, so why is that something that I should defend up here? I don't, I don't think that's the way, whether it was, it, to me, there's no option but to, to get back to the intention, and I do think that's in the best interest of the public, but at 9:22 PM, we know, uh, you know, our brains aren't as sharp as four o'clock today or five, uh, when we first started, and so, uh, the questions and the information that I have is BSNA access was requested at the last meeting, and I didn't hear anyone oppose, we were provided at 5:01 PM on a Friday that, here's the way you get access to BSNA, and it was highly constricted to what I believe the intent was, I have not been able to get answers to emails that went out, forwarded, followed up again, and today, I, I did, I have not responded to that, but I have a, a lot of questions around that, and I don't want to ask those in a one-on-one meeting, I want to ask those with the council in an environment that the goal is to not do anything other than fix it, we can take the people out of it, this council, five of us, is really represents two computers, I read the email, it talked about the Privacy Act of 1974, HIPAA, I'm not asking for that. Who has the highest level of administrative access into BSNA today?
That's going to be our IT manager.
Mike, our IT manager?
He, he's the one that assigns the accesses.
I'm going to ask some questions that I really need to understand the answers to, do you know who has access to BSNA at the highest administrative level? Do we know our org chart and user permissions in BSNA? I'll give you an example, John DeLeo, Administrative and Financial Services Director, has administrative highest level access for all modules, community development, kind of in the org chart, but do you have the highest level, from what I read is you do not have the highest level?
I only have what I need to do, to do my job.
You are the city manager.
Hmm.
And your job is to verify all things happening in all of those departments so that they're running effectively and efficiently, that's the stanza right above the reminder of, please be mindful of City Code 228, read up one more above that, and it talks about efficient. that, and it talks about efficient and effective management, every verification that we've turned over a rock, there's been issues, and the latest one was around a statement with these, uh, notes that were, uh, that was stated, that on 5/24/24, the gentleman, this is regarding the, the, uh, 116 Jackson Avenue, Cowboy, it was quoted, from your notes, from the, uh, the findings that our City Manager provided, came from a document that I couldn't see, and I was told, those are in BSNA, we can go look right now, when I went to BSNA, I didn't find them that next night, and the created date in there, I think we, we all see, it was 5/9, the meeting was on 5/7, so, I don't know why they weren't in there, but the reason I want BSNA access is to say, where are all, can I see all the records, and if there's any one example of HIPAA violation that we've actually came across in this city, who, who came across any, who has seen any confidential information or exempt information, who has seen that with their eyes, and who has access to the very documentation that you're concerned about protecting city employees, this doesn't have anything to do with them, if there's anything in there, fine, and protecting, who in our city has access to this information, do we know the answer to that?
For instance, um, the, the person who does the business tax receipts is going to get information that includes social security numbers and driver's license numbers and sensitive information.
Business tax receipts, okay.
Yeah, um, anything to do with HR, some finance stuff is gonna have information about social security numbers.
Hold on, find, where would social security numbers come in to find, that's, that's our city's financing, right?
I'll address that.
That's our, we, we use Springbrook prior for our county.
Right.
I actually just wanna take a step back to the first one, the first one was business, I, I filled out a business tax receipt in the city, I don't remember turning anything over that I felt was confidential, now I'm a public official, and we lay our lives out in the, in the light pretty, but, do we have a, are those exempt from records?
Protected information, however it's defined, we have a duty to ensure that there's, there's a safeguard in place from it being exposed publicly, it's on a need-to-know information basis, and frankly, a lot of that, a lot of that stuff, I don't need to know, I don't need to know anybody's social security number to do my job, and I don't think council wants to know that either, and I even put that in the email last Friday, I, I firmly believe you're not asking to see this.
But who's giving that info up, is my question?
A business tax?
I didn't give my social security number up to get, to have a business tax receipt.
A business tax receipt application is gonna require either an EIN number or a social security number.
But those aren't confidential, the EIN's not confidential, the social security, so we, can we just redact those, I don't, we don't even want this.
Yeah, but you're, but you're on, you're on the same track that I am, that putting in safeguards, reviewing to make sure there's nothing here that we don't want to make public, but let, let me share with you, and I think I can short, shortcut things here.
Okay.
Where we left off was, um, this was a lengthy series of meetings last week to get to that point, for that email on Friday, and a lot of concerns, but where we left off was, we want to provide this access to council, we want to provide it where you want it, where you wanna see it, I only got one response to that email, and it was for code enforcement, building department, and, and business tax receipts, and we're happy to do that, as a matter of fact, we believe that BSNA, for, for those databases, they have an online component that is cloud-hosted, that when we bought ours, ours, we bought the server-hosted, so, because our IT consultant at the time was very concerned about security, he didn't like the, the cloud-based things, he wanted it on the server, so that means staff has a view that is server-based interface, and that's what you've seen in my office, but the public has another view that is cloud-based, well, the whole, those, that information in those databases is meant to be cloud-hosted, so, I, I asked Mike to look into that, well, why don't we just change to that, so, we go in the same way the public goes in, it's not a council view, it's any member of public has this view of code enforcement and building, for example, and it's the same view we have, no difference, and that solves another question that I was asked about remote access, because not all council members want to have it in the, in the city hall, so, it, it.
Wait, what was that?
Not all council members want to have access restricted to city hall access only, they wanna have it remotely.
Understood, thank you.
So, that, that kills that bird, too, so if we can get BSNA completely cloud-hosted for, uh, code enforcement and building, the public can see the same view that we see, they see every data field that we see, there's no difference.
But I'm not asking for the public, and we're short on time, I'm asking for as mayor, and as the entire council, I want to see your view, because I know there are reporting and capabilities in there that I'm not getting.
And I'm saying we're gonna.
And I feel that my access is being highly restricted, this isn't to make better service for the public, I wanna see 116 Avenue, 118 Avenue, and any other case, no confidential information, that should be immediately redacted, and it's, they have, we have public access today, I don't wanna go over to the cloud version until it's not about providing better service under this, we asked for 10 items to be handled, a lot of these questions BSNA should answer, we asked for all the records, we just learned that more records are now popping up on 5/9, after in that meeting, when I, and that thick report, that one jumped out at me.
Can I answer that real quick?
That doesn't get.
That date, that date, 5/9, that date is, the date.
5/24.
No, 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 you, you keep bringing up the 5/9, the 5/9 date was the date that that report was created to place into the public records request, that wasn't the date that the field notes were created, the field notes were in there, the field notes have always been in BSNA, I looked at them the, the, that night, I went in there and looked at them.
How could you prove that and demonstrate that?
I wouldn't, I, there is no way, there's absolutely no way that I could go in there.
Hold on, I'm gonna slow down, you're telling me that I can't go into Laserfish and look at a creation date on when a field was?
No, you can go, no, you can go into BSNA and you can look at the field notes, you could have done that last week, or the week before.
I, I, you provided the field notes in the month of March to us.
Mm-hmm.
They said, in that, that those are all the, the, uh, notes that we have for 116 Avenue, and anything prior to 2022 did not exist, that's what was written to us.
Yes, and that wasn't my statement.
Right there, I'm supposed to trust, I'm supposed to trust and go, this is the way it is, and just, well, let me just make sure, no, there are records prior to 2022, and for whatever reason, but this record was after 2022.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
When, why was that not provided in the original item that was told, that we were told is completed?
I think we've explained that, Mayor.
One more time, please?
One more time, what?
Re-explain, I, I don't, I can't, why was that not provided?
Why was that, why was that information, why was the original, I think it was in March when we provided that original response to the January 24th items, and in that March update, or in that March response, there was a improper, incorrect response made, because there was, we only limited our records from, I'm gonna say, 2020 to 2022, the request was from 2016, I believe we've answered that question several times on why that information prior to 2020 wasn't not included, do you recall getting that information?
Unless I've got a glaring, very bad issue, the dated specific item was from 5/24/23.
That was the, that was the field note, the date of the field note.
And on that date, first time I saw that was the City Manager's findings, that was not provided in March, and it's not prior to 2022, findings, he said Cowboy made a complaint about rocks, I go, and then it's mentioned, that's on page seven of his report, and then on page nine, he puts a side-by-side table and says it again.
Mm-hmm.
I asked, where was that in the field notes, well, we have the field notes, they were not there, that's my question, then, it was added in BSNA to, uh, on the 9th, that's confusing, when our meeting was on the 7th, you have not answered my question respectfully.
I would love to answer your question, but it's difficult when you raise these issues, I was not unaware, I was not aware of this before this evening, that you had issues on this, this specific question.
I think we're done here, you can, uh, that is absolutely mind-blowing, if you go back to the last meeting, right here in this moment at this time.
Mayor, I've not.
Actually, it's two hours and 30 minutes in the special meeting, we literally talked about this, and you said, we can go look on BSNA now, and I'm saying, I did that, and it was not there.
And did you, did you, you, did you hear what Brian indicated to you, and what I thought I heard you say is you didn't trust what he was saying.
It doesn't make sense to me, are you saying?
It doesn't make sense, or you don't trust him?
I'm asking when that item was put in.
I think he answered that question.
When was that, on the 9th?
No, are you, are you speaking of the 5/24/23 complaint that was filed by Steve Lewis?
The only thing I've been talking about is that.
Okay, that was put in on 5/24/23, I do not know why it wasn't in the, 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 the field notes or the, whatever it was, synopsis that, that I saw that you received, that you handed to me, I don't know why, it looked like that was cut and pasted, and it looked like half of it was deleted off of that, so I don't know why that was there. The reason why the date on the top says 5/9 is because I was requested, or I was instructed to put a heading on top of the, on all of my notices, now, and all my letters that I do, I have to put a, sorry, I'm a little.
I understand.
I have to put a heading on top, that date is the date, is the date that I took that report and put it into the public records request, so everybody on council could see that report, on 5/24/23, a code enforcement officer entered into the field notes that he spoke with Steve Cowboy Lewis, and that gentleman filed a complaint verbally about the filling of the swale, he put that in there, I cannot answer to why that was cut off of the one that you showed me the other day, that you handed me the other day, I can't answer, I haven't looked at the one that City Manager provided me, I can't answer to that, I have no idea, I'm sorry that I don't have an idea about that, but I really don't.
That's okay, if you don't have an idea, you don't have an idea, my issue is, you're saying it was in Laserfish or BSNA, or both, on, on 5/24/23, it went into the field notes, which is, what, is that Laserfish or BSNA, or both?
It would have been BSNA, and that's when we were having the issue, as you know, with the Word documents and people not seeing Word documents, all of the, um, a lot of those field notes, we took from where the officers were putting them, where it couldn't be seen by the public, they were putting them in a little, in, in a portion of BSNA that couldn't be seen, so we took those and we transferred them over, and we originally were transferring them into Word documents, because it was easier, and we were placing them in BSNA, and they weren't being able to be seen, so then we took them all, and we put them in these Write folders, or Write files, if you wanna call it, it's still a Microsoft Word, but it's a Write file, we were placing them in that, and then putting them into the system, we were having some issues with those, too, I took everything, shoved it into a PDF form for that property specifically, because you asked me, I can't see these, I still can't see these, I battled and battled and battled trying to fix that problem, the, I took it all, and I shoved it into a PDF form, I don't, like I said, it wa, it was in there, I don't remember the date exactly that I put it as a PDF file, I do know that I've spent three, four, five, six months trying to fix this problem that the citizens can't see our documents.
The, thank you, and, and I think it's, we knew that there's access to documents was large across just really all properties, and what we wanted to do in January was just take these, the Jackson Avenue, and get all those records right, and so, the, that meeting where they, we presented everything, we needed to know that that was all of the, this is it, because how can we make decisions until we get all the information, then we had our City Manager's findings, which I think his discovery of some sort, is that, that, that came out for the first time there, but you're saying it was there the whole time, my biggest issue, and I said this in the last meeting, how did Cowboy complain about filling gravel in a swale before the date the gravel was in the swale, the gravel was not laid until June, that's it, do we have an answer to that?
The code officer said that he saw that swale field, filled on 5/24/23, he said that she did not fill it in June, she filled it before that, that's what the code officer states.
And you, you, I am going off the testimony of Peg Schaller, I don't have any evidence, I don't have anything to, to say, you're going off the testimony of our code enforcement officer, right, so, that, because it, that just doesn't, my experience there, that doesn't make sense, right, and, and I'm not trying to say, our City Manager said something, you have, you know, this side and that side, and sort of, we're kinda neutral there, I think we have to make a decision on which, which one is the truth and which one's not, and so I'm trying to get to the bottom of this specific issue, BSNA access eliminates a lot of this back and forth, like the same access, Todd, that I think you would have, or anyone would have, please, without any limitations on my ability to run reports.
Question, Mayor, I'm sorry.
Yes?
I was just gonna say, this is a perfect example of what I was talking about earlier, obviously, we have discussed this, you have questions that you could have asked them prior, you're, we're bringing up old items, you're, again, asking different questions, and.
Are you gonna defend me here, Todd?
And what I'm gonna.
I emailed him two days after the meeting that question, I followed your path, I followed your path, it has not worked, I did not get a reply for 13 days.
Did you speak to either one of them?
I just followed up again yesterday and got my reply, I speak to the City Manager as our code instructs, and he works through the departments, Kim, I agree with you, I know that the narrative might sound like I'm disrespectful, and I run around, and I do what I want, I ambush, that's not what's happening.
But did you speak to them prior today, did you speak to Dave, Dickey, and Brian prior to today?
I, I said this at the last meeting to them.
I know, but did, you had questions for today, did you ask them prior to the meeting?
No.
Well, then, I, I'm going to say.
We asked for it to be provided at this meeting, and I wanted to discuss it, and it was put on as an information item, and it's not discussed, do you not see the glaring issue there?
I see that you didn't ask them prior, so I think you still have them.
Or do I have to, and nor should I, I asked them at the meeting prior, that makes no sense to me, respectfully, Councilmember Davis, I said it right here in front of you, I asked them, hey, on 5/24, what's this, we can go and look, and then I followed up with email, and then I followed up with a second email, and tonight, yes, am I gonna go run in to their office as I get here, literally an hour before the meeting, and I've got calls, and go, hey, you still haven't answered me on my fourth attempt to get a question answered?
I'm not saying, I always say, you had no opportunity prior to this evening to question, to speak to them about these questions?
I used those opportunities, and I.
Did you speak to them yesterday?
I emailed them, why, I don't understand the yesterday, yes, I, yes, 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 I emailed Todd yesterday about this, yes, I did.
Well, I, it's obvious that you have several questions and that you need answering, so, because of the time, I'm gonna suggest we move it on, move, move it to the next meeting, if you want an agenda item or whatever, we're asking the same things, you know, we're, we're not gonna get the answers that you want tonight, so I, I suggest you take, you know, you have the opportunity to speak to them in person.
That was, it rolled off, that was no, and I, I do not think we should be waiting till the next meeting to get the answers to the questions to these, since it started in January, this was in the appropriate format, asked at the last. at the last meeting. And here we are, the next meeting, and it's an informa, that's, that's an issue. That, in, in accountability, an email came in today about accountability. They were not talking to our city staff, even though it was sent to the city clerk's office. They're talking to us now. And so BSNA access, I think for the third time now I'm asking, please, I don't want to, I want whatever module you don't, there were no menu of options that said code enforcement, building, et cetera. I don't know what we have. I said finance, code, and building. I would like access to those, and please redact anything. This idea that, tell us the specific area that you want. I have, I don't know why we would have a bunch of confidential information that cities, who, what employees have access to, to social security numbers?
There's also HIPAA information.
But what HIPAA information? I know, we all know about HIPAA.
Details of BSNA, I mean, I was told that there may be health records in some of the modules, somewhere in this.
Have you ever seen one? Have you ever seen one health record, anyone?
I only have access to one module, or two modules, so I wouldn't know.
I do not feel that, that the effort is being made to give this council access to BSNA. Effort went in to stating that there could be health information. And I wanted it to prepare for this meeting, Councilmember Davis, I did. And we never, we never-
Well, they did give a letter. The thing is, I believe that's administrative. I don't think you-
A what?
You or all of, any of us should have access to all of BSNA.
Who should?
I, well, the appropriate people that deal with that. I personally don't-
To Todd?
I personally don't want all the financial information, the HIPAA information or anything of all this staff.
Nobody is asking for that.
If I want to find out about code enforcement or this and that, then that's what we need access to. I don't think you need access to all the information, and you're getting into what I feel administrative. I think you're getting into administrative.
Who, who should have access to the reporting?
You do not need access to that. It's administrative. We do not do administrative.
It is not administrative.
Yes, it is.
It is.
If you want, if you want records, you want reports, and you want-
Public records law.
Yes, HIPAA and all that financial information is not-
Those are exemptions well-defined in public records law.
And you don't need access to them.
I don't, why would I want access to anyone's private-
You're asking for them.
No, I am not. I am saying the same access that you would give the, an administrator on a view capability. I don't even want the ability to edit anything. I want to be able to run reports and view all modules, and they should go in and redact. But they're not aware, to my understanding, of any HIPAA information that we've redacted or processed in BSNA. And I would say, once you come across that, that'd be a good, I understand screening it prior to releasing, but it, it should not be this hard to get access that-
Why do you-
You should have full access, Todd. It concerns me that you do not have, as city manager, everything that you can verify with your directors on an ad me to business.
I could get it if I asked for it.
Why do you not want to-
I don't need that for my, to do my job.
If I haven't demonstrated that what goes into BSNA doesn't need verifying to what happens in the real world? If I haven't proven that, I'm very concerned.
Can I ask why you feel-
If you are in the position that you don't want to verify anymore, Todd?
I'm not saying I don't want to verify.
Then full access is what you need. Give me view only. Who has full access? Does anyone?
Why do you need full access to the finances?
To verify citywide code enforcement, building official, and financial entries, and to do my responsibility and due diligence as a council member, not just spontaneously asking for this after three years and then finding, oh, here's some new stuff.
Can I ask the-
Can we please go in and look for ourselves?
Can I ask the-
Because we have a responsibility to do that.
Can I ask the city attorney, are we borderline administrative here for some of these?
I mean, if the council wants to, you know, delve into the minutia, I mean, I guess so be it.
No, I don't. I don't like this narrative. You're, you're administrative, you're delving in-
Well, I mean, the, the, if I can just make a comment, Mayor, because I, I really don't know anything about BSNA. I don't know what's in there or how it's put in there. I think what, what the manager was trying to explain, and I'm going to let him explain for himself, is, you know, some of the modules may have protected information, like HIPAA-related health information. If, if they do, I would advise the council to stay away from that information. Whether you mentioned, Mayor, finance, code enforcement, building permit, I would hope there wouldn't be any HIPAA medical information in those modules that would present a HIPAA issue. But I don't know the mapping of this system. And I would even want the council members to accidentally stumble upon an employee's health-protected information. So I would hope that when this access is provided to the council, that you're protected from seeing that stuff. How that's done is beyond my knowledge.
I would be happy, I don't want any employee in front of my HR.
I know you don't. But, but the, the point of the email Friday was to say, of utmost importance is protected information. So with that as the utmost level, that, now just tell me, please respond to this email. I said, with the information you want to see, we'll do a quick scan to see if there's any protected information in there. If there's none, we'll turn on the access. If there's some, we have to put in a safeguard. That's what Friday's email was about. I only got one response to that.
I know. I'm, I'm expressing my genuine access. I hope to have it as soon as possible. And, and I thought it was clearly stated on the record, and we waited a, a whole week to 5:01 to get the answer, the weekend hits. And yes, that frustrated me very much.
I'm sorry to frustrate you, but you've just given me the answer that I asked for in that email, which is you want to see finance, code, and building. So tomorrow, I'm going to have staff-
Set that in the meeting. The last meeting, I said that.
Understood. Tomorrow, I was, I will ask staff to review those three modules for any protected information, and if finding none, turn them on on your computer.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Willis?
I know city manager's already stated that there is cloud component that would grant us all access to the data, we could run reports. Now, I have met, this past week, I spent nearly two hours with Brian, and he took me through BSNA again, gave me a refresher, showed me anything I wanted to see. I asked for the time, and he graciously gave it to me, saw anything I wanted, was able to go anywhere I wanted to go. Now, do I want that responsibility to just wander around? No. But I do want to be able to see, just like anyone else would. But I was able to get there. I was able to get that access from. Also spent nearly an hour with the city clerk's office discussing our records and what's public, what's available, what, what could we be creating that is, could be a problem? And if we're going in and creating reports, those are public records. So we have to be careful on what we create as council members, making sure that we're saving that information, that it is suddenly public records, and we could be falling into a trap where we're creating something that the public might want to see and we can't put our fingers on it. So we've got to be very careful on how we tread here. And, you know, as far as the, some of the documents that have been called into question over Jackson and elsewhere, we asked for those things to be visible, even though they were drafts, and they shouldn't have been there. But we, we had a part in creating that problem, so, by our request. So we have to be very careful on some of the things we ask. And I'm sure this is going to get taken care of by the city manager, and I think checking into the cloud-based modules might be a little more robust for us than just a server base.
And, and the reason I like that is because it gives remote access to anybody who wants it, and it's the same view that staff has. It's, we're working literally with the same view. The only difference is permissions, you know, you can't write. You can read, you can print, you just couldn't write.
And we would decide if we're going to go from an on-premise or a cloud-based, the council would make that decision?
I, I want to get a price for that and see what the cost is first and present it to city council.
After you get that, we would be responsible?
Yeah.
So wouldn't it be really helpful to know how the software today looks so that we can accurately compare it to the cloud phase?
Well, the, the view is what you see now, Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, the view that the public sees now, say for code enforcement and building, is the public view. It's that view. Is, staff would have that same view. We're going in that same way.
I understand.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Can I make a, a possible suggestion or just throw a thought out there? BSNA gives training classes. I think it might be who of us as a council to have a training session that is given to us so that we understand the system's capabilities. It will not be that expensive to have them come and give one class to all of us at the same time, so that we know the capabilities and what the system will do, what information is available. This is compartmentalized and moduled, it's, it's mod, it's designed in modules. So I'm sure there are classes of service and things like that where things can be modified as far as access. There are probably administrative levels based on what your, your tasks are, and those things can be restricted to ensure that we have the right levels of, of staff and council dealing with the systems appropriately. But I think that it would be, at this point in the game, with what is going on with it, I think it would be very good to have a training session on system administration and how this can be set up for our situation here to alleviate this going forward, instead of making any kind of, instead of any of us saying, well, we think this is best, let's, let's refer to the tech vendor.
I, I think that would be really good. I would like firm, we have the ability to download them on the computer in the mayor's office or in the council member's office. Today, we've paid for that. That's already been purchased back when we signed it. We got that because they charge per user.
Sure.
License fee.
Sure. I just need to-
Today, we've had the-
Tomorrow, I will have staff review for any protected information. Seeing none, if there is none, open up access as soon as possible, once they're done looking for it. If there is protected information, find a way to make it unviewable, but open up access. That, and that's the information that I needed. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Um, city manager, I have one more question, I'm sorry, and then I will-
Yes, ma'am.
Um, do you, do you know if our implementation specialist, when we had this installed, is the same person? That's probably not.
Um, I could be going out on a limb here, but I know Cheryl Palaio had a lot to do with implementation of that system, and she's still here.
Okay. So if, I would, I would like, I'm not, as long as council isn't okay with this, I think that it would be worthwhile for us to get in touch with that person, to talk and get a better definition of how things were defined and levels of access, so that we can potentially talk to her about a future training and that kind of thing, but find out how they implemented things, because typically software is flexed, flexible, and that might clear up some of these things.
I would just ask that we work through her department director, John Delio.
Okay.
And he's also in charge of our IT manager, too.
Okay.
And I like the idea of BSNA training for council. I like the idea of the online component for both staff and council, same view. And I understand, if I am correct on this, the city council wants to keep this item coming back now as a discussion item monthly, unless I'm wrong, please speak up.
Yes.
And, and I think that covers it.
One quick statement. On BSNA, if it is cloud-based, it's probably going to have a more advanced administrative function, which means it will probably have access to restrict visible fields according to your level of administration. So for the cloud-based, any, any social security number field would be redacted automatically. Any personal identifiers would be redacted automatically. It would not go out to a public view. So, you know, you could, you could have the administrative rights for HR would see all social security numbers. Nobody else would.
Right.
So I don't know how old the server-based BSNA is, but since it's restricted to internal, it's probably fairly wide open. So I think there's, there will probably be some additional administrative features and restrictions that we don't currently have.
And it's all understood that there's, there's information that council is not even looking to be interested in, and, and we know that. We just want to give you access to the information you are interested in looking at.
Thank you. Anything else, council? Okay. With that, looking for a motion to adjourn?
Mayor? Can I make one quick comment?
Please.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry about that. I made a comment earlier this evening, I want to amend it. I, I mentioned, I think it was Councilmember Jackson said, did the property owners out at Fillmore, were they aware of FPNL's response about the rebar? And my, my, my comment was, yes, they did, because I, I was thinking that those, those specifics were in the task spreadsheet that we send out on a regular basis. I'm not sure those specifics are in that. So I'm going to retract that, and if it's, if it's not in that inform, if it's not in the spreadsheet currently, I'm going to put it in the next update, so everybody's aware of it. And I'll contact them tomorrow individually, Sherry and Miranda and the other group.
Thank you.
So, thank, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. That's great.
Ms. Mayor?
Yeah, I appreciate that.
I just have one thing.
Yes.
At the beginning of the meeting, public comment, Pat Campbell talked about the household chemical and electrical amnesty day. I would like staff to look into something.
We, we have been, and I, I told him I was going to share my information with him.
With Pat?
Yep.
I had contacted Waste Pro about that when he originally brought it up, and it was going to cost about $40,000 is what I was told, but it also depends on the volume of what is turned in.
And a lot of staff work or volunteer work.
Yeah. And, and it would be, if you had a tremendous response, price could go up. It would probably be more beneficial if we could share that with another entity, such as Cocoa Beach or something.
I can talk, or if you talk.
But I'll, I'll share what I have with Pat, and he and I can brainstorm on ideas with this.
That's great. Okay, well-
Thank you.
I'd like to, I know we don't do this every time, but motion to adjourn formally?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right. Now, do we have to call the vote on this thing, or is that a motion?
Well, since you made a motion, now you need to call a vote. Otherwise, you, as a presiding office, I could just adjourn.
Well, look at there, city clerk, sorry.
The motion was made by Mayor Pro Tim Kellum?
Yes.
And second?
Unfortunately.
Willis.
Okay. Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Councilmember Jackson?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Kellum?
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
Meeting adjourned.